Tom Board of East Hampton, you're live on television and you are being recorded.
Welcome everyone to the office third work session for the town of East Hampton. I will be running today's meeting in my role as Deputy Supervisor. Supervisor Peter Van Swoeck, mother passed away about 10 days ago and his father's health is failing. So we hope that he and his family find peace and comfort during this difficult time. Carol Ires, please do your role call. Present.
Present.
Okay, everyone, and we appreciate folks that are wearing your masks today. And you've heard work from the governor. He's asked, he's put a lot of, he's asked local governments to step up here and ask that people, you know, be cautious. You can see when we came in, the number of people have been tested. So there's concern and the board will be discussing it at greater length in the coming weeks. So we're going to start with the public portion. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's say it to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this world with the liberation of our rights. So today's meeting will start with public portion and then move them on to topics. We'll be discussing bids with Pete Carosa, airport revisioning update for Bill O'Connor, our outside counsel from Cooley, the draft of airport environmental conditions, planning and zoning from our consultants, Lisa LaCory and Peter Flinker, H dock replacement policy for municipal buildings in East Hampton Town, Lawrence Steinberg from Natural Resources, Rough Riders requests for flood mitigation road improvement from our town attorney, John Joel Nicky, and lastly, South Fork Wind Farm license extension and real estate easement request. Again, that'll be town attorney, John Joel Nicky. And then we'll do liaison reports and resolutions. So as you can see, the main meeting room is quite full. There's a number of people that want to speak today. We've also got folks on the line that are calling in through the numbers through LTV that want to speak. The last time we had an airport meeting, about 20 people did not have an opportunity to address the board. So what I'm going to ask today is that we stay within the three minute time limit. What we'd like to do is have everybody make their comments. Board members take minutes and notes for their own personal use. The town clerk takes minutes that will be published on the website. Obviously, this meeting is televised, it's replayed again on LTV and you can also get it live streaming on YouTube. So I'd like to take this opportunity to hear from everyone who would like to address the board and ask that my fellow board members let the people, let folks speak. And then afterwards, if there are comments that folks want to make, we'll do that. But I just would hate to have to have people holding on for four hours and not be able to speak, like what happened back on July 6th. So Carol has given me the list. And what I'm going to do is alternate between the here in the main meeting room and the folks calling into LTV. So first up is Carl Ires. Yeah, we're going to, Carol is going to be keeping track of the time for us. So we asked Carl that he stay within the three minutes.
Okay, well, I timed this, so I shouldn't be close. Thanks, everyone. It's nice to see you. Important that we all remember to wear our masks or else we're going to all go back to Zoom. So thanks, everyone, for being here and inviting the distancing guidelines. My name is Carl Ires. I'm attorney for the Springs Fire District. We all know that the public's been following the town's communications proposals. And the fire district's asked me to come here and clarify some things and to note some concerns because the town board seems to be heading in the direction of using a side off crandall. We want to make sure that the fire district gets its due consideration for our site. The fire district says to the town, please use our site. Fire district has previously offered to host the town's communications equipment rent free. And we make the same offer here for the cellular on wheels equipment, also known as a COW. Using a firehouse site for the COW equipment has benefits that don't appear to have received a hard look. If the town is taking a hard look and using the balancing tests described on page four of the draft DAF part two, then it's difficult to see how the benefits of the firehouse site are outweighed by other sites that bring similar detriments without benefits. I'll share five significant benefits that are provocative of the communications issues. Number one, there are already existing communications equipment and infrastructure at the firehouse. As such, a COW, similar to what's currently under review by the town board, could be installed by the firehouse and operational in a few short days. In light of the community's need for this type of service, expedience seems to be a priority and the firehouse site offers the quickest turnaround. As long as our existing communications equipment isn't disrupted, we welcome the COW. Two, the firehouse has appropriate existing infrastructure for the COW, including existing meter pans, an asphalt base, a short wire run of approximately 20 feet, depending on the location of the COW, with no disruption to flora, fauna, or habitat. Three, the firehouse location.
Bill, there's something.
Bill, can you please introduce yourself?
Your laptop for whatever you're using is signed in on the screen here.
I can see you, Bill.
There we go. Thank you.
So number three, the firehouse location provides 24/7 staffing and monitoring of the property and the COW site. This will increase security of the sites and performance of the equipment and expedite the response if there are any issues. Number four, installing similar COW equipment at the firehouse at the site preferred by the town planning board can be accomplished without the need for relief from any of the town's dimensional requirements, including the falls out. Number five, adding wireless infrastructure greatly aided the Springs Fire Department while it renders vital services to the district. Specifically, there are numerous wireless-based technologies that the Springs Fire Department cannot optimize during emergencies because of poor wireless service. A COW with 24/7 monitoring would greatly help optimize these operations. The point is that the firehouse is where you expect to see communications equipment, not a Girl Scout camp, not somewhere in the woods that was bought for park purposes. We respectfully submit this proposal to the town at the firehouse for your consideration.
Thank you.
Is that my time? Because I do have a little bit more and. I just have some comments about the draft part two. Specifically, it seems like there's some disparate treatment between the crandall site and our site. And I can hand those in in writing conveniently. And look, we want to be part of the solution. We welcome any discussion from the town about how we can help resolve serious concerns about emergency communications, wireless communication that's part of our daily lives, or the increased integration of both of these that's critical to emergency response and vital services provided to the public by both the town and the fire district. We welcome. So welcome another. And the opportunity to make a more complete presentation publicly at your next work session. And thanks for letting me go a little further.
Mike, can we get the first caller that you've got there?
Sure, one moment, please. The first caller I have on hold is a phone number ending in 0673. I'll unmute that caller now. Looks like that caller hung up. The next caller on hold I see has a phone number ending in 6401. I'll unmute that caller now. Hello, caller with your phone ending in 6401. You're live with the town board of East Hampton. Councilwoman there, open and unmuted, but hearing nothing. I'll move on to the next caller. The next caller I see has a phone ending in 3650. I'll unmute that caller now. Caller with a phone ending in 3650. You're live with the town board.
All right, Mike, we're going to go to Dr. Mike.
Fair enough, go ahead.
Peter Wolf.
Peter Wolf, I've been a resident of East Hampton Town for 45 years. Planner, a professional planner. I was senior advisor to the comprehensive plan down to his hands. I'm talking to you because this airport issue has become very simple. It used to be very complicated, but now with September moving, it's simple. The airport is an asset that is owned by the residents of the town of East Hampton. You were elected to represent the residents of the town of East Hampton. I'm taking on this very, very weighty responsibility as a great man. The way the airport has managed in the past has kind of given away to the federal government and a very unworthy part of the town. Currently, there's an opportunity for the town to allow the residents who own East Hampton Airport to enjoy it, to use it, to decide how it should be used and not used. It is an asset of the town owners, just as much as the beaches are and the streets are. The way the airport has been operating is tantamount to allowing the streets to be used only if you ride around in a noise noise. It should be open to everybody once we decide how it should best be used. It cannot continue to be that much to be done with. It's the only legal, sensible, simple way to proceed. Thank you.
Mike, do you have a caller on the line?
Yes, I do. The next caller I see has a phone number ending in 9396. I'll unmute that caller now.
Hello, this is Frank Arena. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. A new industrial park located in the present area could build into the design environmental safeguards and a traffic circular flow before the first shovel hits the ground. It can offer an orderly and attractive site while presenting contractors the additional space they seek. Doing so would divert much of the contracted traffic from downtown before it hits Main Street in the village. A new industrial park would expand the town's tax base from businesses and lower taxes from residents. It would create new job opportunities for locals. It would mitigate some of the problems associated with the overdevelopment of the industrial area along Springs Fire Place Road. Town planners, consultants, and decision makers have a once in a lifetime opportunity to make for a better East Hampton by supplementing the living with commercial and industrial development space now available to the town on Springs Fire Place Road. Thank you for the opportunity again to speak.
Now it'll be Dr. Mike.
Good morning, my name is John Corain. I'm here from the Southampton townsite of Sag Harbor. And I'm glad to see so many people here from the Springs area. I live in the Hamlet of Noack. And Noack is home to many of our volunteer firemen, police officers, teachers, people who really form the backbone of Sag Harbor. And I'm simply going to read a letter that was written here in January, but it's from Noack Civic Council. And I could have read the same letter that was written in 2016. And we wrote a similar letter in 2014. And really, nothing has changed, but fingers crossed, maybe this will be the year. And this year, it's written to dear supervisors of Anstoyak. For over a decade, the Hamlet of Noack and neighboring communities in the town of Southampton have suffered negative impacts to our quality of life because of East Hampton Airport. Helicopters, seaplanes, prop planes, and an increasing number of large private jets fly low over our homes at all hours. Promises to fly friendly and to use old water routes have done nothing to improve the situation. Not even this terrible pandemic has resulted in improvements. It is very troubling to imagine what will happen to airport operations once we get back to good health. And just skip to the final in respect for time. In 2021, this year, the town of East Hampton will regain control of its airport. We hope you and your board will take advantage of this opportunity to make significant and sustainable improvements. In addition to the problem of aircraft noise, Noack Civic Council is actively engaged in protecting our supply of clean water. As you may know, the problem we have is fighting sand land over there, which continues to mine to frightening depths very close to our aquifer. With the airport property located above the salt source aquifer, this is even more reason to take bold steps to remedy the KHCO problem. We encourage you to look for a quieter and more environmentally friendly future for all of us here on the South Fork. The members of Noack Civic Council are ready to help. Please let us know how we can assist with repurposing efforts. And personally, I just want to thank you for letting us as your neighbors. We're not your constituents, but you've been extremely gracious in listening to the concerns of both us in Southampton, our neighbors from Riverhead Town, our neighbors from South Old Town, and at this point, even people from Queens and Nassau County in Manhattan who've been plagued by particularly the helicopter traffic. So thank you and I wish you all continued success in a very difficult, thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll take a caller, please.
Okay, the next caller I see has a phone ending in 0253. I'll unmute that caller now. Hello, caller ending in 0253. You're live with the town board of East Hampton. Hearing nothing, would you like me to move on? The next caller I see has a phone ending in 4896. I'll unmute that caller now. Caller with the phone ending in 4896. You're live with the town board. Not speaking, some people perhaps are just listening in. Do you want me to try again or do you want to go back to the room?
We're going to go back to the room. More you would want.
So I can speak. First of all, for, I just want to thank you for having a follow-up meeting. I was very concerned that the last meeting we had where how people were really raging over the noise that we're receiving from the airport. And I have to say, personally, for me, there's nothing. I am directly in the flight path, directly. Yesterday, I logged over 45 complaints. And these are jets, large jets, low-flying jets. I cannot eat outside, I can't swim outside, I can't have friends over for cocktails or dinners. And I don't know what has happened between two years ago or three years ago and this year, but it is significantly different. And I've been trying to get data to support the fact of how different it is, but it seems like there are just no controls on this airport. I am in possession of a letter that Peter was sent from the FAA as of November 6, 2020, where it outlines very clearly the four options that the board can take. One, you can negotiate an agreement for mandatory restrictions on aircrafts, closure of the airport after the grant assurances expire, and re-wing of the airport under different conditions, complete closure of the airport after grant assurances expire in September 2021, or continue to operate the airport as it is as a public airport. As a business person, it completely baffles me that for three years, we have been complaining about this. I did not, I don't know how they changed the route path, but this year is my year. But you know, it frustrates me that for three years or more, people have been complaining, complaining, complaining. And there's nothing more frustrating than going into a black hole. And that's what I feel the town is at this point in time, that we can file complaints, we can meet with people, we can issue letters to the board, to individuals, and we get very little response. And I'm not alone in that. I mean, some of you have responded very graciously, met with me, but as a whole, and to your constituents, they're not hearing from you. I came in to complain the fact that we have no communications. You know, there was no indication on the website. I was told to follow the website, it'd be a notification of town meetings to address the airport or public meetings. None of that has happened until today. And we're, what, a month, two months away from the deadline? And you know, there are questions that we as a community have, such as what are you going to do in September? And September seems to be the deadline. I'm not aware of any plan that is in place to either help the businesses that are currently there or to address the residents' complaint. I feel like I'm on a game show. And my final question is, I just don't understand what more information the board needs to start making decisions. And I would love it for people to address that and to meet the smaller groups in the community to deal with all the issues that we have. Thank you.
Mike, we'll take another caller, please.
Okay, the next phone number I see ends in 4568. I'll unmute that caller now.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hello? Yeah, hi, my name is Kevin Farrell. I'm from the Springs District. I have a couple of questions here regarding the proposed emergency communication plan with the 185-foot tower. So first question is, how did the seven acres of recreational open space at the Crandall Street suddenly become the site for an emergency and commercial communication tower? Because it's been, it's always been labeled as a recreational open space on town maps. And then all of a sudden in 2021, that changed.
Kevin, it's good to hear from you. This is public comment, so we're not going to be answering questions. If you could just, if you want to put your questions out there, we can get back to you. If you want to make a statement, you know, please use your three minutes to address the board.
Yeah, the one statement I'll make is that I think the town board should thoroughly share your extensive research that you've conducted because that's not transparent to the public. All we have is that extensive research has been done on this site. So if you can make that available to the public as well, that'd be greatly appreciated by those who are in not support of this. And then I'll post the other questions for the town to review after.
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat that again, there was noise in the room.
I said it'd be great if you could make your extensive research report that you've done for the proposed site available for the public to review as well. And then I'll post the other questions for the town board to review thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Tom Bogdan.
The past few speakers have spoken.
Tom, could you just?
The past few, my name is Tom Bogdan. I'm from Mars. The past few speakers have talked about a very horrible, terrible problem, an affliction. Shouldn't happen to anybody. Another speaker spoke that the citizens of the town of East Hampton own that airport. All very, very true, and I empathize with all of them. But the fact is that part citizens of the town of East Hampton are Montauk, and Montauk does own part of that airport. If you close that airport, they will, the traffic will come to Montauk. There are people in groups in East Hampton who have said that Montauk somehow has been duped that are under the spell of these aviation companies. That's not true. Those companies have never talked to anyone in Montauk about this situation. No, we have gone to them. We have met with them. Montauk United has sat at tables with them, circled around tables with CEOs, vice presidents, presidents, lawyers, and they are business people. They're not owners, they're not thinking about destroying us. They're just plain business people who face a problem, who report to their stockholders, who own major assets. And if they lose their control of how they run their business, they will revert to another form. They'll come up with another plan. Very matter-of-factly. And in their plan, they say at least half of the traffic will go to Montauk. And they show us reports why this is the case. And it's really understandable. It's a business decision, and that's all it is. Over 50% of the traffic will go to Montauk. Now, there are people in Montauk that also claim that Montauk United doesn't exist. Somehow it's run by only one person, me, Tom Bogdan. Montauk United is seven years old. It has five people on its board of directors. We have over 3,500 subscribers, people who ask to subscribe. Of that 3,500 number, 18 are legitimate citizens of the town of East Hampton. This information is all on a computer. It can be printed out, names, addresses, email addresses, and physical addresses. We are ready to show that report to any group, anywhere in the town, anytime, any day, any time. We only ask for two provisos. One, if a group challenges us, you bring your list. Let us see your list. Let us see how many real legitimate East Hampton people are on this list. And then once and for all, maybe, we'll really find out how many people represent what in terms of this airport. We're not talking, and the second proviso is only legitimate East Hampton people, not people from other towns, other places. We talk of Queens, my God, are you, you have a responsibility to Queens now? They're holding a dance about this in Chaboygan, New York. Maybe you should be responsible for them too. Thank you very much.
Mike, we'll take a caller now, please.
Just a moment. I see a caller with the last four digits, 45, I'm sorry, just one moment. 4140, I'll unmute that now. Caller with the last four digits, 4140. You're live with the town board. Hearing nothing, would you like me to try one more? Moving on. I see a caller with the phone ending in 6203. I'll unmute that now.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, sir, you're live with the town board. Could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Russell Munson. I've been flying out of East Hampton Airport since 1968. I do fine art aerial photography from my very small, single-engine, two-place airplane. Even though I'm a pilot, I can sympathize with the citizens who are under the helicopter routes. And I appreciate the town board trying to work out a way in which the airport can remain open and yet still give relief to the people who are suffering from the noise. I don't have a solution to that, but I would urge the town board to keep flying. There has to be a creative solution in which the air. There has to be a creative solution in which the airport, which is an asset to the community, can remain open, and yet give noise relief, relief to the citizens underneath the flight path. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, Russell. Now, go back to the meeting, the meeting room, Catherine Sly.
Good morning. Good morning, my name is Catherine Sly, I'm an East Hampton town resident, full-time, year-round. I just wanted to bring a couple of things up to the board's attention that might actually be good news for once. On July 27th, the FAA issued an STC, which is a special authorization for a new fuel to Dami Aviation, that is called G100UL. It is an unleaded fuel for small aircraft. They've issued this new certification. The testing has been a decade-long effort by Dami Fuels. They've tested it in turbocharged, normally aspirated Continentals, Lycomings, a couple of different types of Lycomings, the engines in Ciruses, Piper Mirages, Malibu's, Navaho's, Cessnas. And it has all been determined to be a fully functional, non-detonating, unleaded aviation fuel. Even better so is it can actually be dropped in, meaning mixed with existing leaded fuels. So if you have a plane who goes to another airport, and either that fuel is or isn't available, you can mix them together as the fleet-wide integration happens. And so this is the, a very, very big step forward in the aviation community's efforts to go green. And I think everybody in the aviation community is actually very, very excited about this right now, because the STC has been issued by the FAA for only certain types of...
What's an STC?
Sorry. It's a special, hold on, I gotta give you the, it's a...
Subtle, mild, kind of...
Subtle, mild-type certificates, thank you. Subtle, mild-type certificate. Basically what it is, is it says that an airplane that already exists, or an engine that already exists, can after the fact have something that it was never originally certified to have. And so they're allowing this to actually, to take place. They're continuing their, their testing, they're actually using every riddle down in Florida, to try and work more into a fleet-wide evaluation to ensure that this can work on all engines. But they started with what they called the bad boy engines first, to see if it would work then, so they actually think it will continue to go forward and be fine. Right now, they say that the manufacturing of it and refinery of it can be done at any normal refinery, and they're hoping to actually have it in place and for sale as early as 2022, next year. So, you know, just something that I wanted to bring up to the board, that, you know, the aviation community is continuing to move forward with trying to find solutions to all of these issues. And we encourage, you know, progressive, forward-looking actions by our town board. We don't want to see regressive, backward-looking actions, where you close the town, close the airport, and they go, oops, I guess it turns out that we're gonna move forward after all. These are things that we're just asking the town board, I know, it's not even, I'm hearing from other people, even on the other side of the issue, who are just asking the town board to engage in, you know, in a discussion. We, there's this perception out there right now, that the board has already decided to close the airport without actually ever working on any solutions. And I think the town board might be in a good position now to, to change that perception and reassure its community that it really does want to find solutions, like Russell said. You know, there are people who are affected by the noise, and solutions need to be found with that, but that doesn't necessarily mean closing the airport. So we're just basically asking the town board, let's work together, let's try and find ways to keep our airport and resolve some noise concerns, and look at these kinds of things like the future of unleaded fuel in our community. Thank you.
Mike, is there another caller?
Yes, there is. I can unmute the next caller, whose phone ends in six, seven, three, zero, I'll unmute that now.
Hi, my name is Michael Kushner, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I've been a resident of Sag Harbor for 20 years, and all in the same location. I want to start by saying that I love where I live, nestled in the woods by the long pine greenbelt. Unfortunately, I have the misfortune of living along the November Route, through which all helicopters going to East Hampton Airport travel. Because I happen to live within a few miles of the airport, helicopters tend to travel at low altitude over my house. In addition, because of my proximity to the airport, I'm also the victim of the ear-splitting sound of oversized private jets, both taking off and landing, and often doing so directly over my home. I don't think I need to reiterate what's been said about the obvious negative environmental impact of having so many low-flying aircraft leaving trails of helicopter and jet fumes over our homes. I do want to try to convey what a typical Friday or Sunday night is like in the summer for those unfortunate enough to live in the path of helicopters. Helicopter noise is a particularly difficult kind of noise to deal with, because it projects directly forward through the target it's aiming for, and it's, it's slow and unpleasant build, seven minutes, several minutes prior to every approaching helicopter's arrival. There's the familiar buzzing, getting louder, louder and louder, for several minutes. At that point, all conversation in the home must by necessity cease, and my dogs will start barking uncontrollably until finally the chopper arrives over my house in full apocalypse-now mode. If I'm lucky, it's a courteous pilot, and it's a nice day, they might arrive 2,000 feet above. If snubnoxious pilot, or if the cloud ceiling was low, it will often pass it under 1,000 feet. Then the relief is it passes over the house, noise finally relenting and receding into the distance. Now imagine that 30 or more times a day. Imagine it happening at all hours, usually at around 3:00 in the morning, waking up my entire family in the middle of the night. As we all know, the number of helicopter flights have increased substantially again just this year, but the proliferation of private jets at that airport is now becoming almost as big a problem. It's also clear that the companies that are profiting from these activities will never voluntarily restrain themselves, given the opposition to the town faced when it tried to place curfews. It's a fact that everyone who flies in and out of East Hampton Airport has an alternative means of getting wherever they're going. But those of us whose lives have been directly and continually damaged daily by the unrestrained explosion of private carbon-spewing air traffic have no choice. If the airport isn't closed, we can either move or continue to suffer a situation that will inevitably continue to get worse, causing damage to our physical and mental health. You wouldn't allow a skyscraper to be built in the middle of East Hampton. How can you allow an airport to operate with no limit on the number of takeoff landings, with no limit on noise, no control over timing, and no limit on a regard for environmental damage? The amount of traffic at this airport is entirely out of character with the nature of the town, and it's only going to get worse. Once the town has control of this airport, it needs to show that it cares about all the people in the town and the majority towns. Please, for the good of our health, close this airport, thanks.
Next up is Diane Laverrier.
Good morning. My name is Diane Laverrier, I'm with Jordan Laverrier, P.C. We've been retained by the residents of the Norfolk-Cranial area to oppose the town's proposal to install the 100-foot monopole and 180-foot, 85-foot cell tower at the Norfolk-Cranial site. First, I'd like to thank Carl Iris and the Springs Fire Department for offering up the Springs Fire Department location as a more suitable alternative than this residential area that's been designated by the town as open space and a recreational area. Since our time is short, and you have a long agenda, and since the board has correspondence that was submitted by us yesterday, I'll keep these comments brief. And since Carl Iris didn't get a chance to address the issues with the, with the EAF and the Part II, I think I'll just jump on there. The proposed EAF that was published for public review is flawed in many respects. In some, the town board can't circumvent the requisite environmental review by calling this revised proposal an emergency, especially when it's been studying this emergency since 2017. There is a need, not an emergency, that the town should continue to explore based upon its prior negative declaration that was issued in 2018, which did not include the Norfolk-Cranial site. The current proposed EAF dated July 7, July 7, 2021, under proposed negative declaration, is flawed from the outset. First, certain board members haven't even seen EAF Part 1 in its entirety, and therefore they can't act on it. Second, there are several misrepresentations as to environmental impact, which form the basis for this proposed negative declaration. As the board is well aware, SEACRA requires at the outset that the lead agency, the town board, determine whether the project as proposed may have, have a significant adverse impact on the environment. It's a very low standard. Pursuant to SEACRA, the following are considered indicators of significant adverse impacts on the environment. Removal or destruction of large quantities of vegetation, creation of a hazard to human health, which still remains to be explored, impairment of the character or aesthetic resources of the existing community or neighborhood, this is by statute, a substantial change in the use of open space or recreational resources, which this would be, changes in two or more elements of the environment, no one of which has a significant impact on the environment, but when considered together, results in a substantial adverse impact on the environment. The remnants of our comments are set forth in the, in greater detail in the correspondence that was sent to you. There are several potential environmental impacts that went overlooked in this proposed EAF. The town needs to revise the EAF to accurately reflect the potential impacts. This proposal in its amended form is at most a Type 1 action, and at least an unlisted action with significant environmental impacts requiring the requisite environmental review pursuant to SEACRA by the town board.
And we're gonna need you to respond.
Sure. Legally and practically, including the Norfolk-Cranial site in the mix, creates legal and practical hurdles for the town. There is a need, but there's also a process. And the reason for the process is to ensure that what is ultimately developed endures for the long term and balances impacts with what works for the community. We thank the board for the opportunity to comment.
Mike will take the next caller.
Okay, the next phone caller I see ends in four, nine, six, seven, I'll unmute that caller now.
Hi, my name is, hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Oeyou, and I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment on this today.
Could you please state your name?
Oeyou?
Excuse me, caller, caller, if I may, the board's asking you to please spell your full name, please.
Yes, sorry about that. Oeyou.
Great, thank you.
Of course. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to comment today, and I, and I just say that I'm moved to comment on a couple of the public statements that I heard earlier today, which, which I hope is, is allowed in the, in the public session. So just first, on the issue of the environment with regards to the airport, I know that we had a number of people speak both positively for the airport and negatively on this issue. And I just want to say that I think these advances with regards to unleaded fuel in particular, while perhaps encouraging, are by no means going to meaningfully mitigate the negative environmental effect of the airport. I mean, there are tons of net fuel being poured into our air, and, and by extension into our lakes, rivers, into our meadows, and into our bodies. I don't think that's safe, regardless of whether or not the fuel is leaded, and I think it only takes someone with common sense to know that. And the second, it's just with regards to everyone who said that we need to try to find some sort of cooperative solution in which we slightly reduce the amount of noise, perhaps put a limit on the capacity of planes that are allowed to fly out of the airport, while trying to keep the airport open. I'm just moved to say that if we give the people who run the airport, if we give the special interest to control the airport an inch, they'll take a mile. And I'm pretty sure that the historical context of the situation is, the airport was originally supposed to be very small, a regional airport, but since then, traffic has only spiraled and only increased, and the problem has only gotten worse. And I'm unclear as to how that wouldn't happen again. I just think those are two things to take into consideration when, when considering future policy with regards to the airport. And once again, I just want to, I want to thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to comment on this issue.
Thank you, man. Okay, now back to the room, Robin Goldberg.
Hello, my name's Robin Goldberg. I'm a 29-year homeowner in Springs on Briar Croft Drive. I also reside in New York City, and just for the record, have been a active member of my downtown community for over a dozen years, and a member of my community board. So I am very knowledgeable about how all these things work with the town, the town board, the council, the election, all of that. I think that, you know, obviously, everyone is in support of a tower for improved emergency communications, which seems to be mixed in with this rush to judgment for better cell service. If people are so concerned about better cell service, then buy a booster. I don't know what that, you know, what the big deal is about that. However, it seems like the only emergency is to make a quick judgment decision to drop a tower in the middle of Springs on a quiet little area that has a lot of immigrant community. Maybe there is something to be said about thinking, oh, people that don't have language, that have language barrier maybe wouldn't stand up and support their community against this tower, which really impacts health risks. And so any kind of conclusive report is, does not exist in regard to the future of the network. So 5G is fifth generation. It requires much more usage of, usage of radio frequency waves, and there is not internationally any report that conclusively say there are no health risks. Just like years ago, Love Canal was shut down and abandoned town, Pilcher, Oklahoma, the list goes on and on, because there was never enough reporting and research about the health risk, the fall zone. It's also interesting that, it seems like the only emergency really here to do a tower in the Crandall-Briar Croft area is the upcoming election in the fall. Now, as far as the emergency of the survey that was just dropped last night under the East Hampton Wireless Infrastructure Poll is preposterous, that you would drop that on August 2nd without any community notification. There have been no signs put up for this meeting, for the meeting last week, for the fact that you dropped the agenda today on the cellphone tower. It's just all of this, unfortunately, politics at play. And, you know, for me, as a voting citizen, it's, it's, it's really so egregious and devastating, and really appalling and insulting to anyone's level of intelligence that this would take place in East Hampton. And my last comment is, if you don't already know, I'm just letting, informing you that the Springs District is the highest tax district in all of the Hamilton. So I think that the taxpaying citizens of Spring should really have input on this, because that's where their money goes, to the town of East Hampton.
Is there a caller online?
Yes, I'll go to the next caller I see, the last four digits are four, eight, nine, six, I'll unmute that caller now. I'll unmute that caller now. Hello caller with the phone ending in 4896. You're live with the town board. Councilwoman, moving forward, there's no one there. Do you want me to try another one?
Please.
The next caller I see, the phone ends in 3850. I'll unmute that caller now. I'm sorry, 3650.
It went through the roof. It was going in that direction already. They COVID hit. You didn't realize that they didn't have to go into work anymore five days a week?
I just muted them. I just muted them because it didn't seem like they were...
All right, I'm going to come back to the room. He'll go some time.
Thanks. We're all sitting here, 200 feet from a huge tower that's filled with all kinds of stuff. Anyone in the room care?
Excuse me, could you please address the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. No one in the room cares. It's a huge tower right there because it's in the right place. I drove around the block, around Fort Pine, Crandall, and I counted the houses that are closer to the proposed tower than where we're sitting now to that tower. It's 25 houses. That's 25 families that you're asking to accept the consequences, which frankly, if I was going looking to buy a house, I don't think I'd buy a house in the shadow of an 18-story tower. I mean, it's untenable. You already have, you know, I'm not going to get into the whole thing about the firehouse, but obviously if it was really an emergency, that tower would long ago be armed. That's the tower. I got something to say about the airport, too. It's the same thing. If you severely curtail large jet and helicopter use, I doubt anyone in this room would care. There are local people who have small planes and have been at the airport for decades. That's who the airport should really be for. And lastly, if you do close the airport, I want my sculpture back.
Mike, is there another caller in the line?
There's one other caller. I will unmute the phone number ending in 4140 now. Caller with the phone ending in 4140, you're live with the town board of East Hampton. Hearing nothing, councilwoman, there are no other callers that haven't been spoken or given the opportunity to.
Right, thank you, Mike. Richard Burns.
I think I made it by this morning, so good morning, Gord. Pleasure meeting this way. Thank you for giving us the opportunity that the muted to speak with you. I know how difficult it is sitting on your side of the table when listening to voices that don't agree with you. I also know how difficult it is to change one's minds in what you believe is a perfectly viable solution to the longstanding problem of emergency communication in the Springs community. I would like to share a similar situation that I experienced as the superintendent of the East Hampton School District when seeking a viable site for our transportation department. Our first proposal of placing the bus depot on district land made perfect sense to the school board and administrative team. It was our land. It was cost-effective. In the many months of planning for the use of our site, we received SECR environmental study approval, traffic studies gave us the green light, the planning and momentum were aligned and all moving in the right direction. The proposal would save taxpayers to $200,000 yearly rent being paid to a landlord. The architect drew up state-of-the-art renderings and we all drew a sigh of relief that a solution was found to a long-term problem facing the East Hampton School District. Who could argue against such a well-thought-out plan that met all legal requirements? It was our land and we had every right to build on it. In board meetings that followed our transportation presentations, we quickly found out that many members of the community were vehemently against such a proposal. What a disappointment. How is that possible? I think many of you here know how the story ended. We went back to the drawing board and found another solution. We found another solution. It was not easy. We listened to our neighbors and had to restart our perfect solution. The new solution cost top taxpayers another $2.3 million. The voters unanimously approved this new site for the bus depot, even with this additional cost. Please follow the path of the East Hampton School, the path the East Hampton School District chose. Listen to your community and figure out a new solution that is acceptable for all concerned citizens of the Springs community. We know that a better solution is possible. Many of those present today do not accept your current proposal of a temporary tower being erected on the North Fork Crandall Woodlands. Please change your position on this plan and do the right thing for your community. You have the power to stop the building of this temporary tower. Use it. Find a location that all community members can support.
I know a little bit about that something you described.
So the next up is Judy. And Judy, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Tilton?
Yeah.
Could you spell your last name?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Judy.
I-L-T-O-N. Judy Tilton. My family and I reside at 21 Lincoln Avenue. Such great, great, great things people have said. I just, there's got to be a different solution. I was coming here this morning and driving down Fort Pine Boulevard, I look to my left, I see this canopy of trees and there's so much destruction and so many people taking down the woodlands. We've got to save our woodlands. This is a community of homes around the area, there's a lot of kids on the block, it's the safety of the families, the safety of the people around. The firehouse sounds like such a great thing, so please, please, please consider that as an option. Thank you.
Hey, Jerry Hodgins. I live up in this, on Norfolk Street. Comment, when we were here last, I was commenting about the urgency of this, which keeps on coming up, coming up, coming up. And one of the things that I was concerned with was that getting the word out to the community, letting everybody know, more people that know about this, the more people that are saying, whoa, whoa. You said then that that day, a mailing would be, a notice would be put in the mail to the community about what was happening in the, on the Norfolk Street-Cranial area. Am I dreaming? Because it never went out? Nobody has, the community doesn't know about this officially. Was there supposed to be a mailing? That's what, that's what we said. Maybe it was Mr. Van Foyak or whatever. Somebody said it. No notice. There's a lot of people who still don't know about this. Let's get the word out. Let the whole community know. Make sure you put it in Spanish and English so that everybody knows.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Brayden Crozier. I've lived in Springs my whole life. I live over on Gardner, so this really doesn't directly affect me, but my dead mother lived across the street from those woods for years. I earned all my merit badges in those woods, all my time in those woods. I just don't seem to understand why, and we would have just enough room to put this tower in this tiny little lot. Why put it there? We have just enough room, in the neighborhood no less. Doesn't make any sense to me. And like the workforce that keeps this town running is in Springs, comes from Springs. We all know this, it's no secret. So if the workforce who takes care of this town is in Springs, why do you seem to feel like they deserve to have a tower put right in their front yard? That doesn't seem right to me. Do you think less of the workforce in Springs? Is that what it is? Why is it always right in, you know, the little guy's yard? Why don't you put in your guys' front yard? Why is it always us, the little guy? Pay more, work harder physically. I work, you know, 10, 11 hours a day. Why is it me who's being taken advantage of or my, you know, my neighbors? That doesn't seem right at all when there are plenty of other proposed areas that could be put. Should you consider the other areas? It doesn't seem like you have, especially because I had to receive the notice, I heard about this from a neighbor. I didn't hear about this in the paper, I didn't hear about this anywhere. So also, why are you trying to keep us somewhat uninformed about this? You just wanted to get it pushed ahead so that it's agreed and we can do nothing about it?
Right.
I shouldn't have to hear from my mother's friends, who I haven't talked to in 10 years, that they're putting up a tower. That's not right. I should be hearing from you guys that you guys want to put up a tower. But that hasn't happened at all, at all. I'm, all the information I've received has not been from anyone from East Hampton Town. It's been through my own research or the research of my neighbors. So what's going on? Is pretty much all I'm saying, what's going on?
Next up, I believe it says Leah Larson, is that correct?
Hi, my name is Leah Larson and I'm actually a resident of Crandall Street. And how did I find out about this meeting? Somebody put up signs. They didn't send us any notifications.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry, town board members, could I interrupt for just a moment? I apologize. Speaker, could you please just kindly back away a little bit from the microphone? Thank you very much.
I've owned my house in Springs for 20 years. I first came out to Springs, actually in 1964, as a young mother. And I wrote about coming out of here to Springs in 1964 in a storm, this week's guest column, about how much I love Springs. I love the fact that it's funky and I love the fact that it was beautiful. And I loved the fact that there were regular people living there. You know, my husband was a poet. He came out because we knew a lot of poets and artists out here. But I grew up in the Bronx, from working-class people. And it's the people in Springs who are paying the highest taxes here because we have the fewest businesses. You know, why is it that on top of everything else, we also have to have a cell tower on a street that has very few people in an area where the kids in the town have one of the few crazy great recreational areas where kids can do whatever they want that they can't do anywhere else? You know, they don't have to belong to little leagues, they don't have to belong to clubs. They can just go there and make a lot of noise and bug neighbors like me. But that's okay, I can deal with that. And I'm asking that you allow us to have whatever little bit of peace and whatever little bit of stuff of our own that we still have. Thank you.
Mike, do you have a caller on the line?
I do have a caller. The last four digits of the caller's phone is 7623. I'll unmute that caller now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello caller, could you please identify yourself? You're live with the town board.
Oh, thank you. Hi, this is Martin Drew, everyone. How are you today? Martin Drew from Springs, entering calling. How are you?
Go ahead, Martin.
Yeah, I'm just glad to catch you guys in a work session today because I want to continue bringing some information about 28 Main Stone Park Road and the problems down there. A restaurant operating three businesses without legal approvals. So I just want to make you aware, they were on schedule for tomorrow for a hearing with the planning department, but apparently that's not happening. So Richard Girardi and crew down there are violating all the laws and I don't know that anyone's above the law. I expect you folks to do something about it. So Eric Miller is down there, I guess, running the restaurants. Richard Girardi is your owner, violating all the laws. And apparently we can't get anything from the town attorney's office or the code enforcement to do the right things about it. So I just wanted to make you folks aware of it again, especially Mr. Caffey Burke Gonzalez as our liaison to Springs. And just want to let you folks know that there's been ongoing, dutiful complaints since November 2020 before any of those activities were there or ongoing. So apparently we're cutting some political favors, it seems like, to Mr. Richard Girardi, who's been given adjournment out of the court with 27 violations. They gave him adjournment, so I guess August 9th he'll be in court. And now, missing his August 4th planning board situation, which was for tomorrow, and apparently that's been canceled or they haven't cooperated. So we need you guys to utilize the lawful redress process because due process has been thrown out the window here and it doesn't seem like we have any lawful redress ongoing except for political favors. So to be fair to you guys, I'm letting you know this today. I hope I see some activities that shut them down in the next moments because you're creating some traffic and pedestrian problems down there with letting this occur. And then the reality is, since it's been a nine-month drama, I'm starting to file complaints with New York State, right down to the judicial committee that I guess governs the judges because I don't feel the judge should have ever allowed this adjournment. And then you guys who ain't doing nothing about it with your code enforcement and attorneys. So the complaints are going to keep on going until you guys start doing the right thing. For the record, I want all of that written down in the record, please.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, back to the room.
Morning. I honestly wasn't planning on speaking today because I feel this board obviously is aware of my opinion on this, but I'm on the dance floor and the band is playing, so I might as well dance. A few things that were brought to my attention today was an ongoing theme, I'm not really involved with the airport and I don't really know a whole lot about what's going on there, but it seemed to be consistent with this board pandering to a more affluent and influential community. And that's what guests might go because as someone who lives in the area, I am not directly affected and I am not a missive. I don't... I don't think it should go in anyone else's or NIMBY or whatever this word is. And for the record, I want it noted that anybody that calls anyone else a NIMBY is a NIMBY by virtue of the definition. So, you know, so... But what I want to highlight to everyone, and I'm going to say and say again, is that this particular area is clearly an area of middle-class people. But mostly, it's an area of our immigrant community. And as someone whose life's work has been to support our immigrant community, I'm sure you are all aware that this is a group of people that aren't typically very vocal. They're fearful of government officials. They're fearful of public venues. Many of them are. I cannot make a blanket statement. But this is something, working with this community, not... And I'm sure you guys are aware, if you've taken the time to learn the culture, learn the nature, learn, you know, what amazing resource our immigrant community is to Springs, East Hampton and the East End, and how desperate we need our community to be here. And I feel very deeply that this has been greatly considered and rushed because you are counting on all of the things I have just said. And I feel that this is such an in-your-face discrimination, egregious racism. And I want it noted for the record. Thank you.
Mike, do you have another caller on the line?
Yes, I do. I have a caller whose phone ends in 0294. I'll unmute that caller now.
Thank you.
Hello, caller with your phone ending in 0294. You're live with the Town Board of East Hampton. Hearing nothing, Councilwoman. If you want to move on, there are no other callers.
Okay, great. Orlando Rodriguez.
Thank you. So to the honorable members of the Town Council and to the Town... Thank you for allowing me to speak. My wife and my seven-year-old, seven-month-old baby are homeowners in Springs. And this will be built pretty much under the antenna. And my house probably could get hit. My neighbor's house certainly would get hit. So let me start off. A monstrously giant antenna should not be built in the middle of a beautiful residential neighborhood. Not in ours, not in Clearwater, not anywhere. Okay? There are parks for dogs bigger than parks for humans. To Brayden's point, there are places that we should conserve. Preservationists have never looked retrospectively and said, "We made a mistake by preserving." They have never said, "We made a mistake by not moving faster." Lincoln Center nearly displaced Carnegie Hall. J.M.C. Hatton Fund saved it. Nobody ever complains and says, "Oh, Carnegie Hall's ugly." This is a beautiful park. I'm not making legal arguments because, thank you, Diane, for expressing it in the letter, which I encourage you all to read and take seriously because it is a very, very strong letter. And it does talk about a host of legal challenges that exist. But I'm speaking as a human, as a resident and as a proponent of green spaces. The fight to preserve our wild places is a fight forevermore. The management of a town is an endless game. So nothing should be rushed. There's no reason to rush it. The airport today creates problems to, to gentleman's point, I didn't catch his name. He said, "You wouldn't allow a skyscraper because you built it in the middle of East Hampton?" Unless you would. And that seems a grave mistake. Another thing is that many people have spoken about the health. And we know that just because there's no contravention of FCC guidelines, meaning just because the guidelines FCC gives and we find health concerns, it doesn't mean that you can prevent it based on health concerns. But that does not mean we should abandon common sense. Again, we're talking about prevention of noise, the preservation of the things that... Prevention of Noise, protection of our water and our views and peaceable enjoyment of this place. These are things that we must preserve. And again, you don't put monstrously giant antennas in the middle of beautiful residential neighborhoods. That's all I have. Thank you.
So we've gone through the sign sheet and there's no one on hold. Is there anybody else in the meeting room that would like to address the board? I'd love to see a show of hands.
Hello, I'm Bruno Shrek. I'm a resident of the Springs. I've been coming to the Hamptons for 72 years. My aunt was a nun in Watermill and so we would go as visitors every summer. I've owned a home in the Springs for about 40 years. I noticed in the report, the... One of your experts is reporting on conditions and other airports that are supposedly equivalent to East Hampton. I don't know how much you pay for these reports. I noticed that he charges hundreds of thousands of dollars in other communities. The report that he delivers to you is fairly thin. But he did include, I guess at your expense, 72 pages of his resume. In the fairly thin report, he uses a lot of conjecture where he doesn't have specific data on East Hampton because it's not collected. And he compares it to other airports where they do have that. Those other airports, most of them have airlines flying to and from them, much bigger airplanes. And yet somehow, he comes up with an equivalency. Those other airports operate year-round at full capacity. They have a schedule that's routine year-round. Meanwhile, you have to admit that most of our traffic is only in the summer months. So these experts that you use, it's a little questionable, especially since one of the airports that he uses is Hollywood, California. West Hollywood, California. Well, I lived in West Hollywood, California for nine years. There's no airport there. Here's a chart. There's no airport. Copy for each. No airport. Paid money for a report on this comic system airport. So the quality of your experts is a little bit suspect. The money that you spend, I'm pretty sure comes out of airport funds. So it makes you wonder. For free, a few years ago, I prepared a report that's just as current today, showing that there are 10 complainers that account for almost all of the complaints you receive. There are the 10 complainers. Of course, your expert that prepared the graph used a logarithmic scale rather than a linear scale that shows the disproportion of these complaints. So I prepared it on a linear scale. Then you have airport users. It looks like there's an equal number of users to complainers, except I prepared a graph showing the users in green relative to that tiny portion of the complaints. So the data that's prepared looks to me like it's designed to close the airport. You have people calling this JFK. Here's an apple, JFK on the south fork. It's giant. It's almost as big as the South Fork. The noise pattern for JFK. That red line that covers most of East Hampton is the noise footprint for JFK. That red dot... That red dot is the similar noise print for East Hampton. It is almost entirely within the property of the airport. So we might review how you handle that.
Mike, do you have another caller on the line?
Yes, the caller's last four digits of their phone ending in 4221. I'll unmute that caller now. Hello, caller with the phone ending in 4221. You're live with the Town Board of East Hampton.
Hi, my name is Albert and I live in North Queens, specifically Whitestone. And I hear about all this discussion about to close the airport.
Excuse me, caller. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you please spell your full name, first and last, please?
My name is Albert Mirashi.
Can you spell that, please?
And I live... Albert, A-L-B-E-R-T. Last name Mirashi.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. Hello, my name is Albert. I live in Queens, specifically in Whitestone. I don't know if you guys are aware that North Shore helicopter route that goes right over my house has completely destroyed my quality of life for me and my family. I mean, it's not just an issue out there in East End. This route affects so many communities from New York City all the way to your airport in East Hampton. Why? Are these flights essential? Are these people above the law? They can't reach that place by car or by train, but they have to disrupt the lives of so many. Are you guys aware that I cannot go outdoors? I cannot enjoy any activity in my backyard? And not just outdoors. I hear these helicopters in my basement with my dehumidifier running and my TV on. Now, if you guys think that this is normal, then I obviously, I have no idea what to say. But it has come to the point where I really have to consider moving out of the house that I grew up in. And this doesn't just affect me. It affects my wife. It affects my kids as well. I don't want to take any much of your time, but I'm just hoping that, you know, this is it for this airport. I hope that they close it and close it for good because we have suffered way too much for way too long. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dawn Mayer. I'm a business owner in South Hubbard. I've been hearing a lot of both sides today. And I think, I forget the gentleman's name, who proposed that there's got to be a happy medium for everybody who's talking today. I don't think that closing the airport is a solution because it brings a lot of money to the town of East Hampton. It really drives a lot of goodwill too. There's a lot of people who do a lot for the community in different charities and different ways that we're not accounting for today. And I think it's really important that we do keep it open. If there are some concerns for the community in terms of hours of noises, I'm sure that there can be a more specific plan of how we can address it. But I don't think that radically changing and closing an airport that brings a lot of money to the community and facilitating a lot of people to commute to the Hamptons is the solution. So I propose that we just find more... Less radical of a compromise. And the arguments today were like one or two people that are about the noise or about the fact that they don't like it here. I think there's got to be more, you know, a study, economic support and a lot of other studies as well. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lisa Legalia. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I originally had some notes I wanted to write, but I wanted to just start out by saying we put together a petition in support of us not putting up this tower across the street from my house. I live right on Lincoln. I found out a little over a week ago from my neighbor down the road who distributed flyers on our doorstep to make us aware that we are now looking at the probability of an 18-story tower right outside our homes. The question is not whether or not we need cell service in Springs, because we all agree that we do, but where the towers should be located. The problem can be solved without taking up a very small, unique parcel of land in Springs that has been used for kids for recreational enjoyment, riding their bikes and playing paintball drop codes woodlands for generations. I have a petition of over 500 signatures, which me and my neighbors have gone around the neighborhood, door to door, to get support for the small park... To save the small parcel of Greenland from becoming a commercial zone consisting of a 185-foot AT&amp;T cell tower. The support we have from our neighbors in Springs goes as far beyond the surrounding area of the tower. I have letters from friends here from Clearwater and down below in Woodbine that are supportive of this action. I am also aware, especially since we spoke today, that we have been advised that the legal attorney for the Springs Fire Department are willing to host the cow for a temporary site until the town reaches and negotiates a more reasonable and permanent location for the personal cell tower, which would be more appropriately placed on municipal property such as a vacant lot around the spring school between the ball field and the old boatyard or buried in a 179-acre woodlands in the Girl Scouts. Just consider an alternative location to the proposed special parcel of park-like woodlands in the midst of a residential area of the Springs. Please allow this to remain a recreational and national preserve in an overdeveloped panhandle of the Hamptons. In the past, this town rejected signs for businesses that have somehow not met town code. For instance, at Maystone Market, there was a small... Pardon me. There was a small fitness studio that was denied permission to put up signs larger than something that would go on a small post that was already existing on the side of the road to ensure the preservation and historic nature of the Springs. Yet they are willing to take a small parcel of land and turn it into a commercial site for an AT&amp;T tower that may be built up further in future. Our property values will be compromised and our pristine neighborhood that is surrounded by the nature will now be turned into a commercial rural area, which is exactly what the residents in the town have been trying to protect this hamlet from turning into for generations. I have owned and lived in the Springs for over 20 years and to enjoy this special place. So please, for these reasons, please protect our unique and cherished woodlands and find an alternative location.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephen Handwerker. I've been in East Hampton for over 30 years and in Springs for over 30 years. I came to the Springs originally because through fishing, I got to know Three Mile Harbor and surrounding areas. And I would be able to go out to meet Springs Town Doc and fish off it with my kids. And I'd say, "It's time for dinner. Let's go to Three Mile Harbor and let's catch dinner." And within 10, 20 minutes, we had three or four nice flounder. There's not a flounder left in Three Mile Harbor between pollution, sewage, other problems. I also am a dog person and I walk my dog down fire cross every morning and about four times a day. I love my morning trip. I also, where I'm located now, will have a perfect view of the tower. And so will the birds that I see, the turkeys and every other kind of wildlife. I want the Springs and fire cross and the surrounding blocks to stay just the way they I want the Springs and Briar Croft and the surrounding blocks to stay just the way they are. I love nature and I love the feeling of coming out here and being like a little forest area of our own. We have just Christie's if we want to pick up a newspaper. The beauty of being in the Springs was, it wasn't like the rest of the Hamptons. We have a very nice, calm, quiet life here. But, and I saw it sitting by my pool and looking up that tower would be just absolutely everything that I don't want and my neighbors want. Thank you.
Just for the record, I wanted to note that I am opposed.
Please just state your name.
Kevin Farrell, I called him before, but I thought this was so important that he'd show up. I'm opposed to construction of this, and it's not because I'm opposed to the efficacy of communication in Springs, although I don't think that's a priority. I worked in tech sales for the past eight years, I work remotely, and my livelihood very much depends on availability, reliability. And although it's been an issue here and there, and it's very seasonal based, it's never been one where I would deem as an emergency. And I think that for us to paint this as an emergency is a bit of facade. And if it truly was, I think that the town should earmarks on the budget that we're proposing for this project to perhaps conduct a more thorough site assessment of the existing tower that we have, the Fire District. I think that we could, the town and the community of Springs deserves to see the work and the research that's been done, other than just, you know, this is tied up in legal matters, it's not worth it. You could shore that tower up, you could talk to the various ISPs to find out what needs to be done to make that viable option. I'm not claiming to know the answer or the various sites, but I'm strongly pushing for a site assessment to determine if that site is indeed not viable. I just haven't seen anything other than it's too tied up in legal matters to support otherwise. So I've seen site assessments and heard site assessments go down for a lot less trivial matters, and this is not a trivial matter. So please, I would urge you to conduct a site assessment of the existing site so that we're not throwing out existing resources and, and just as importantly, removing one of the few green spaces left in Springs.
Just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank my neighbors who.
Kathy, could you just say your name?
Of course, yes. Jaco and Esposito, I live at Lincoln Avenue, I'm a full-time resident here in Springs. I haven't been here as many decades, there's many of the shows here, though. I also just want to point out, our neighbors are here and many of us are wearing white. And I just want to thank you all for your support, everything you've done.
Only for you, Jerry.
I know this is just the beginning, and I'm so grateful to you all.
Josh, do you need to address the board?
Sure thing. So I'll just say a couple of things, because, oh, I also, before I address the board, I also would like to thank Jeff Bradman. Because Jeff Bradman is the only one on the floor who has heard our concerns. And with all due respect to the rest of you, you have been elected to hear our concerns. And I know you sat here today, but Jeff seems to be the only one who actually cares.
That's right.
Yeah, so I would just like to thank Jeff Bradman for his leadership. I also just want to clear up some misinformation that one of these board members has, has shared, perhaps incorrectly. Last week, we sat through the work session and we heard Eric Chan say, within no uncertain terms, that there are neighboring homes that will be impacted by this tower on Randall Street, and that there are homes in the double fall zone. This map, when I count, about nine homes at least, either their direct home or their yard, will be within the double fall zone. So I want to be very clear about that, because some misinformation has been shared to members of the Springs CAC about whether or not there are homes in the double fall zone, and why does this matter? These are pictures from 2020 and 2019 of the east, the tower at the East Hampton Recycling Center. They clearly show the debris has fallen off the tower itself. We're not talking about the tower falling down, we're talking about an antenna falling down, right? We know there'll be multiple. We're talking about a dish falling down, we're talking about ice falling down, we're talking about actual pieces of the tower falling down. This thing will be towering 18 stories over Lincoln Avenue. Every morning, I walk down Lincoln Avenue with my husband. People are driving back and forth to work every morning, every evening. They should not have to drive under the tower and be at risk. So it's not just the homes in the fall zone, it's also the people driving down Lincoln Avenue. Maybe Kathy, you will drive the other way so that you don't have to drive under the fall zone. But I can assure you, many people do drive this way. I would also like to point out that on Monday last week, we submitted a FOIL request to this board. We, I believe, five days, five business days have passed, we have not heard any response. We would like to know when we will be getting that response, and urge you to please respond to our FOIL request immediately. And I'm just going to check my notes, because I didn't prepare a statement today. Oh, lastly, the other thing that maybe this board does not know is right across the street from the 6.9 acres that you're proposing to put in 185-foot cell tower is a land preserve that has been designated a land preserve by the Peconic Land Trust. Clearly, it's literally across the street. Clearly, putting a 185-foot cell tower across from that is not in line with the community, the character of our community. That is not what was intended for this residential neighborhood. Please reconsider. We have all shared our concerns. This is absolutely outrageous. We have to come together as a community and find solutions that work for all of us, not just some of us. Thank you.
Would you like to address the board? Okay, well, I thank you, everybody, for listening.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, I'm sorry to interrupt you. There is a caller, a new caller on the line, if you wish to take one more.
Terrific, Mike. Please put them through.
Thank you. The last four digits of this caller's phone are 9320. I'll unmute that caller now.
Yes, hi, my name is Cynthia McGowan, and I sympathize with the Springs residents, but I am calling about the air traffic assault on Southampton Town. And I am so upset right now while listening in my house to the meetings, I'm hearing helicopters. We have sea planes and jets circling next to me throughout the day, every day, from 4:00 to 11:00 at night. Mr. Albert Mirashi, thank you so much for calling in, because while the people on the other side say there are only 10 complainers, it is so off-base. Most people do not know how to complain, and they leave it up to the others to cause action for things to change. From Northby to Bridgehampton, Watermill, all throughout Southampton Town, I'm in Riverhead shopping, Hampton Bays, jets, helicopters, one after the other. Over my house there, I've called on three in 10 minutes. It's just too much. I've called on 15 in an hour, 35 in one day. I live on the Sag Harbor-Bridgehampton line, and I'm under the November route, and our town board asked for an abatement over almost a month ago. Nothing has changed. We continue to be disrespected and assaulted, and it is known that it is only 1% of the visiting population to our area. It is just so unfair and egregious of them to not change their ways. And I am, I am so upset. And I sympathize with Mr. Mirashi, and I'm appalled that he was laughed at. I am sick of the propaganda. Here, can you hear that right now? Small plane flying over me? Assaulted throughout the day, every day, in every hamlet in our town. And I thank you so much for hearing me out and allowing Southampton to be heard, because we are being assaulted. The north fork, south fork, to the west, to the east. I hear it, but people do not have the strength to sometimes complain or attend these meetings for one reason or another. They just can't find their voice. And, but they are upset. We are all upset, we are being assaulted, we can't, we're interrupting them in our sleep, we can't go outside for a simple afternoon. It, it's, it's just too much. And I did not want the airport to be closed, because I realize for so many reasons that it, it's brought a lot to the community, but, but now I feel disrespected. And it, things have not changed one bit. We're disrespected over and over and over by propaganda and the promise to be a good neighbor, but we are not feeling that. And all I ask is for East Hampton Town and the airport to be a good neighbor or close. And that's all. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
So just one more time, is there anyone else?
No, Councilwoman, there are no other new callers who haven't been heard.
During the meeting, I've been watching air traffic out here, and during the phone call, there were no airplanes flying over Southampton. And during the meeting, there have only been two aircraft flying vicinity of Southampton.
Everyone, 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 this is the quorum, this is your government here, please continue to talk to us. If there's no other public speakers, I know we might have other words, there's, there's two things, I deal on facts. Two weeks ago, we had discussed, we had a caller that put out a fact that actually hurt an individual. The simple fact is that there were two building permits that were issued for the Springs Fire Department for their tower. Building permit 60011 was issued on 11/5/14. Building permit 60421 was issued on 1/3/15. This little building structure that we currently have, that was mentioned by that caller, Ann Glennon, was not appointed until her position, until June 10th, 2015. So that was misrepresentation and a misfact. I just wanted to set the record straight on that. Lastly, I don't ever make decisions, I'm not a racist. I know the residents left here. Most of you know that I am actually one of ethnic minorities in the town of East Hampton. I am actually Asian. To be called a racist to me hurts me. I don't mind sitting here, listening to the public, I enjoy it. And I enjoy working for you and doing my diligence, because of my planning and my background in history. To be called a racist right now offends me. I look forward to hearing more. I thank you, Mr. Burns, he's correct. It is tough to make decisions, and some of the best decisions are ones where you change your minds. That's what I'm here to listen to. To be a racist and called a racist, I'm sorry to hear that today. And I don't think any of the board members here are racist, no matter their decision or their views on this, and that's my two cents.
You look at your voice to say something. Well, should we move on with topics?
Are we going to discuss the cell phones?
No, this is not a topic. It's not on our agenda for today. It's not on the agenda today. I was going to bring it up during my liaison report, since it.
You presume we'll have a work session on it in the near future. Well, I appreciate the neighbors coming out, and I do think that we have some problems with notice, and I'm glad you've taken care of it, and I think it's, you brought up a lot of points that are concerning, I remain concerned about our process, and we'll do what I can to make sure that we follow a diligent, methodical, deliberative process that really looks at alternatives. I don't believe now or ever that we have to hurt one neighborhood to benefit other neighbors. I think that we're better than that. I think we can find a solution here that doesn't destroy a wooden bed's amenity and fix our cell phones. It may take a little time, not years of time, but a little time, but if we do, if we have a process that is thoughtful and careful and deliberative, I think we can find a solution that doesn't hurt anybody and fixes the problem. That's right.
I think, as I know, there's one more caller on the line, so we'll take that and then we'll move on to our first topic for children's kids. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, the caller's last four digits ended in 6412. I'll unmute that caller now.
Hi, Town Board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you, please state your name.
It's, it's Rona Klopman from Amagansett, and I'm calling because I'm a little confused. I saw the notice from the Town Board about wearing masks to the meeting, and I noticed that Jeff walked in with a mask. Sylvia, David Lees, and Kathy didn't even have a mask around their neck, and I'm not sure what that means, because as Chair of ACAC, we have an ACAC, we have an ACAC meeting coming up. Sylvia, I'm glad to see you have one with you. But there's an ACAC meeting coming up, are we required to have people wear masks or not required if we have a, an in-person meeting? So I'd like clarification of that for anybody who's listening.
Thank you, Rona. The Town Board will be deliberating on that, and will be issuing a press release, I would imagine, shortly. Okay, so now that we've, you want to come back up?
Sure. So, once again, Rich Burns, I just want to be clear, because one of the perceptions going around is that the Town Board is voting in two days on the cell tower, is that?
No.
Okay, I just want to be clear about that. No votes, it's not on the agenda, and there'll be time for deliberation. Thank you. I appreciate you answering the question.
Thank you, Rich. I do want to say, and I haven't said much of anything, because I'm, I was very hurt by a lot of the conversations that went on today. And, you know, I've worked really hard for my community, I love my community, and to hear some of the hate speech that was really said today is harmful. It's harmful for all of us. And I, you know, but I will say there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I hope that the misinformation can be clarified in some way. We have on the website, we have a timeline of how things have been perceived, how things have proceeded over the years, what's important for emergency communications, and you should be able to look at some of that. And, you know, we will have a work session on this. Just Rich coming up, and thank you for, first, your speech earlier, your conversation that you had with us earlier, and just now for asking that question. But anyway, and I want to thank David Lees for what he said.
I have to add a comment on that, because I heard the comment about environmental racism.
No, it wasn't just environmental racism.
It was egregious racism.
Yeah. I have it going up. And though we can reconnect, you can.
I have to make a comment about being interrupting. I feel differently about speech in front of the Town Board on controversial issues. Sometimes people get a little emotional, it is true, sometimes people do make accusations. The term environmental racism is a term that is, that is, I think, a valid consideration. I think that was the intent of the, of the speaker. I try, I tend to think that as Town Board members, we need to have pretty thick skin when people come in on issues that affect their homes and their lives, and the airport and the tower are two of those issues. And I, I just shy away from criticizing people who are coming in to speak sincerely about issues that are close to their hearts and their homes and the way they live in the Southampton. I think we, part of our job... I think we, part of our job and why we're sitting behind this raised platform is that it's our obligation to listen carefully and filter that and not take it personally. I don't take these issues personally, ever. They're not, they're not personal to me. These are discussions about what's the right policy for the town of East Hampton to make. I frankly always welcome hearing comments from the public because you know best your own neighborhoods. And when we listen to you, we do a better job. So I thank you for coming in and helping us today.
Well, there you go again, Jeff. I'm not going to let you spin it right now because it was egregious racism and it offended me. I already said I like listening to everyone, done this same amount of times, you also. But that was a comment that was directed to the board. Now, I do have thick skin, unfortunately now. I don't really want thick skin because I want to feel the impact of the residents' comments all the time. That's just life. We're going to be, I have many friends that I could look at here right now. And some of those friendships might be diminished after my term in the board is done. But to get called an egregious racist right now is something that, yes, it offended me. And I apologize if that's what you feel, but that's, that's my comment and I'll stand by it. I don't mind moving on to bids now.
I'll again say that, that the word environmental racism was not used as I took careful notes. It was said that we were targeting an immigrant community and that we were doing it as racist. And that is what was said. You can spin it any way you want, Jeff, but it was egregious what was said. And I am grateful for my colleague, David Lees, for addressing that issue.
My name is Teresa Collins and as someone who was defamed the last time I spoke to this board, I want to correct you kindly. You all need to look up the phrase white fragility because your temper today is classic. And if someone wants to write a book on how the hamlet stays white, it's what you all did today. Don't take it personally. It transcends your own time. It's systemic. And given your own political party committee, you just need to Google environmental justice and fence line. You will find that during the Biden presidential campaign, he redirected the EPA toward these principles. If you were to redirect your principles to these facts, you would publish the minutes of the Springs Advisory Committee, which is a big black hole. Any town liaison that serves on the committee should be responsible for transparency at these committees because they've been used as a launch pad for disruptive policies in neighborhoods that are traumatized. You are looking at a neighborhood who has watched their life expectancy plummet this last year, more so than white people. And if you say that you're not racist and you're not considering that in every step of the way, you're racist. So I really want, it's a terrible year. And thank you for a classic study in systemic bias and its repeat. I mean, I could get bogged down in the granulars like, gee, a few months ago, the scarcity of recreational areas in Springs was a driving point. And Crandall was never mentioned. Springs Park, well, that was, that was the jewel that was sought after. So now you're flipping around on this. I don't know what.
Teresa, we could adjust the board, please.
Adjust the what?
Address the board.
Ah. I've addressed the board as representative of people in the room. And I might turn this way to say, I yield my time out to the rest of you.
So we're going to move on to topics now. The first topic is bids with Jeannie Carosa. Thank you for joining us today.
We are going to have a presentation at the airport. It's interesting.
We are, actually.
Don't go away.
I actually would like to hear it.
Hello. Good afternoon. The first bid I have to accept is for the Phillips demolition, property demolition in the amount of $77,059. Can you sell incorporated as low apparent bidder? Also going to be rejecting a couple of bids, those being the town wall window replacement and the Akabana solar farm pollinator meadow. And both of those are going to be revised and rebid again. Also noticing this week coming up would be the annual drainage contract. And then also next week, noticing the resolutions around the Thursday, be RFP for merchant card, internet, and/or electronic payment processing services. And then also professional services for 100% renewable energy roadmap plan for the town. And finally, we have a couple of proposals to recommend. I have Tom Rule from our Housing Community Development Department and Severo Kristovic from our Buildings and Grounds Department. The first proposal will be for a professional engineering services at Camp Hero. And secondly, Severo will discuss the professional engineering services for town projects. So first up is Tom Rule unless you have a question for me.
Questions for Jeannie? All right, Tom, you're up.
As you may remember, on April 13th, the board discussed the upgrading of the 28 homes that are dumping raw sewage into a march hole in the ground that the town has been owning for, since the 1980s. Upgrading that to something that removes nitrogen using clean water money. The first step we set was to find an engineer. So this board put out the RFP on May 6th for engineering services. And we came back on May 27th. At that point, Jeannie Carosa, our per chain director, and I came up with a committee of, to evaluate the six responses we got. And it was somebody from Purchasing Natural Resources, I had two people, land acquisition, myself. And we use LK McLean because they weren't one of the vendors. We used LK McLean to evaluate the technical specs. Bill Anderson and Chuck Morton is the operator of this sewer district of the town and also lives up there. Part of the evaluation committee came up with a short list, which we narrowed down to two people, two firms, I'm sorry, not people. We met with them. We discussed, discussed amongst ourselves. Those meetings were on, the meetings were at the end of June, June 25th, June 28th. Because we came to a tentative recommendation of hiring Nelson and Pope. We were providing them with some information. Kim Shaw with Natural Resources was a valuable source of information previously, trying to lower the cost because we had some of what we were asking them to do, but we didn't. But there were things that, you know, we thought might be needed to do, specifically cameras in the pipes determine, you know, how old those pipes are, they back from the Air Force. So how old are they? After all that, they came back with lowering costs. We have a total cost of $78,661. And we're recommending Nelson and Pope. And it was more or less unanimous. I mean, it was unanimous. In fact, Jeannie Carosa sent around and emailed everybody saying, all right, is everybody good on this? Everybody said yes. And so that's, that's our recommendation. We hope the board awards the contract on the next meeting. And it's unrealistic to think that we're going to have anything to go out and bid before the end of the year because they're going to have to do a lot of investigation of what's there. That's central challenges as to what's, what's been buried in the ground that we did not put there, look like at this point. But any questions?
I just couldn't discuss with anyone in the tax district.
All right. Well, Chuck Morton lives there.
So he's representing them because I had, I had contact with an individual at the town hall talk CAC last night about this, said that there was a citizen group that got together, some representatives from the town that I wasn't aware of. So I just want to be sure they're aware of this. And then my second question is the funding line from Water Quality Technical Advisory, is that CPF funding or is the funding line going to be through their tax district?
No, it's definitely coming from Water Quality. Jeannie has the, so it's not coming out of the tax district. Well, Chuck was the, the first thing that's going to happen is they're going to meet with the residents because some of the recommendations, we don't know what they're going to come up with, but if IA systems, that involves a lot of digging up of people's, you know, the engineers.
I got where you're at. I just put those, you asked, as long as, as long as the individuals in the tax district are aware of what we're moving forward and the funding line is not coming from the tax district.
I told them that it's not coming from them. I mean, you know.
And I think that's where the board was at that point, particularly for the IA systems. I still don't mind looking into possibilities for decentralizing the system if needed to. So, but that, that.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's really what we, we were asking Nelson Pope to do because if you're using gravity and they go down, you may be able to use that big field.
Of course.
Yeah. The other thing, which is not directly to this, but the, the improvement project's been partially completed. The new pumps, new grinder pumps are installed at the project. We are waiting. The building is on, kind of, they're putting a new door in. There's a back order on that door. Once that's in, they're going to finish it. And then the upgrade that the district is paying for, that was the subject of the meeting with the town, with the supervisor, that's, that's proceeded and that's almost complete. Chuck Morton has indicated that the pumps are running great. So this will, once the board goes ahead with this, one of the first things that could be made is that.
So Tom, you mentioned investigations are going to have to be part of what's going to happen with this system.
Well, we don't know the condition of the, we know this cast iron in the lower pump station because we saw the cast iron pipe coming out of the wall. We know this cast iron up top. We don't know what the condition of those pipes are going there. So they're, one of the things that under consideration is running cameras through that system to see if there's penetration, see if there's.
Is that covered in this bid?
Yes, yes.
That was my.
Yeah, that was part of the negotiation with them.
Okay.
We have surveys of it. We, you know, this, the town did not build this system. They got it from the, they got it from the United States government when it got to Montauk Air Force Base. It cut it off and it built part of it. So it's a, it's a mishmash.
Okay. So we're, but that's, the investigation is going to be part of what we're.
Yeah, this is, this, this covers it. Nothing ever covers everything because, you know, change always happens.
Yeah.
But, you know, this, this covers all that investigation.
All right, thanks.
Any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you to Tom Rule for coming to me about this and helping in this very attractive way. The committee is great and it sounds like a really good process and we've gotten everybody on board. And this is a, a real step forward for Camp Hero. It's obviously just the end of the beginning. It's not the beginning of the end. But it's a real positive step forward and I hope that the end result is that we protect the nearby state park and prevent pollution to Oyster Pond. We never had an episode of raw sewage coming down the streets. And I, I really think you deserve some credit for conceiving of how it could be structured, Tom. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Speaking of hard work on Camp Hero, I just want to thank Severo also for going through the records and doing a very good job of trying to track down a very difficult history of what happened there. I never got a chance to say that to you.
Good afternoon, Town Board. My name is Severo Kristovic. I am the Building Maintenance Supervisor and Capital Projects Manager. I'm here to report on the RFP for Professional Engineering Services for Town Projects. We had a total of 13 engineering firms, all extremely reputable, that were involved with and began requests for the proposal. We had a group of people that were together besides Jeannie Carosa and myself. There were people from the Planning Board, Natural Resources, Water Quality, Buildings and Grounds, Street Lighting Department. And we were all involved with trying to determine who to be the best suited for the town as far as engineering goes. We took into account not just the cost of services, but their experience, qualifications, financial liability, demonstrated ability and capacity to meet the requirements of the RFP. We chose two firms. So instead of just one this year, we actually chose two that method that demonstrated the abilities and also showed that the projects were the most in line with what the town currently has and also projects that we have planned for the future. Those two firms are LK McLean and Nelson Pope. Also, just regarding buildings, I'd like to mention that there is a proposal on Thursday for the engineering of a roof replacement at the YMCA. This will include solar and a new energy efficient HVAC system, which is in line with EESC recommendations that Lawrence Steinberg will go over a little later today as well. So.
And that's a resolution, just so everybody knows, hiring McLean, I think it's in the $60,000 to $65,000 range. There is, he had already bonded $200,000 for the roof replacement. That was in the 2021 capital budget. And there's $147,000 in our YMCA Capital Reserve Fund. And the engineering for this project will come out of the Capital Reserve Fund. Thank you, Kathy.
Great. Thank you, Severo.
You got it.
Appreciate it. Okay, now, next up is the airport revisioning update. Bill O'Connor. Bill, we welcome you. It's been a while since we've seen you in person.
Good afternoon, Deputy Supervisor, member of the board. Sorry not to see Peter here today, so please give him my condolences. I have to take a minute here to join the Zoom. Never done this before.
It does seem counterintuitive, doesn't it, that you're here in person or you have to go through your laptop?
But I'm on my laptop, going into the Town Board meeting on Zoom. I think I have this down right now. Mike, I think that's me, you let me in, right?
Yes, you are there. You can share.
Let's give that a shot.
It's going up right now.
Great. So we have Lisa and Peter here with us today to give a presentation on airport property zoning and planning. But before we do that, I just want to give a little recap on where we are and where we're going with respect to the airport. That doesn't seem right to me, Mike, am I?
It's to your left on the screen. You see it?
Okay.
You're up.
All right.
It's broadcasting to the town. Everyone can see it.
Great. So early May, we had our presentation from HRNA and HOH on the economic issues at the airport and the operations that have occurred over the last year or so. In the July work session, we heard from Professor Wubbles, who was giving us an assessment of sort of the, the contribution of carbon to towns' environment relative to the number of people who use the airport. I just want to say we got a lot of really good comments, both through the board and through other avenues at the hearing or at the work session, for example. And that feedback is being taken into consideration by our consultants. By way of example, there was a follow-up presentation at the AMAC meeting where there's a very helpful suggestion to take the analysis of the East Hampton Community Alliance with HRNA and kind of put it together just to make sure that they were using the same methodology. Turns out they actually are. They just have a little bit different inputs in terms of what is relevant for the economic analysis. So that work continues and I'm sure we'll be back with an update soon. Today is the presentation on zoning and planning. This is really intended to give you a sense for what you can do within the same zoning regulations within the town. You know, obviously there are limitations on any sort of redevelopment, repurposing or reuse of land. So that's something we definitely want to take into consideration if considering any alternative uses for the airport. And so it's an excellent presentation. Worked very closely with Peter and Lisa and the Town Board to cover a lot of ground with that presentation, so I'm looking forward to it. Coming up after this work session, we're targeting early September. Might even be late August, but I think it's early September for a work session on the diversion study. That's been something that's been talked about quite a bit. And so we're doing a very robust diversion study. We're also going to do a survey. We've done surveys in the past. I think it's time to do another update, given some changes that have occurred over the last couple of years. And so we will have. Given some changes that have occurred over the last couple of years. And so we will have people out doing some survey work in August. And then really importantly, I heard some comments about this from, from the public session. There, there is going to be some very robust public engagement sessions over the airport. These are smallish groups where people can come in over a series of days to talk about the airport, get their feedback. And that engagement will be moderated by Peter and Lisa as well. Covered that with my explanation of what we're going to talk about on the property and zoning presentation. But just, you know, getting a sense for what's possible as an alternative was really the goal with this presentation. There's a little more detail on the diversion study and how we're going to approach it. It's focused on all the relevant East Hampton airports with, of course, a special focus on Montauk. Really trying to get a handle on what would be the impacts at the Montauk Airport if there were to be changes at the East Hampton Airport. I know the Town Board's held very strongly about getting a good sense for what that might look like. And so that will be a special focus. I mentioned the survey. It's going to be over two weekends in August. And the purpose here is to test the assumptions from the economic report. And then I've covered the public engagement session, sort of the plan there. So I'll turn it over to Lisa and Peter, unless there's any questions from the Town Board for me at this point about where we are and where we're headed next in the process.
I'm, I'm fine. I'm glad to hear about the diversion studies. I think the public needs to hear about it and also the public engagement portion of the small group design. It was something that was mentioned today by the speaker. So eagerly looking to be able to get the public's schedule and that.
And also, as I heard in my Montauk CAC meeting last night, I do know I will advocate for the public engagement. One of those sessions to happen in Montauk has potential diversion could affect that, that handle also then too. As we bring that up, bring that, move that forward then too.
Right. I, I think one of the goals is to take into consideration when we have these meetings, so we can ensure maximum attendance and where we have them, to make sure that we, you know, draw in as much feedback as we can. And they're, you know, they're going to be moderated, but they're going to be fairly formal, you know, just give people, you know, an opportunity to, to give their feedback. And it will all be recorded, you know, this will be presented to you in a sort of a format.
Am I wrong if I said that? Please let me know if, if the outreach, the outreach, the notice for outreach will go through press releases, the town's social media, also other, other platforms or user groups we might have. And then I would also recommend anyone going to the town's website or signing up for the Alert Me Now data that the town might have to alert them of these public engagements.
That's certainly the goal, is to get the word out as much as possible so we get maximum participation.
We'll turn it over to Peter, I'm sorry, Lisa Lacory and Peter Flinker. So.
Please, Bill. Yes, I just wanted to let Bill know that I had to stop sharing his screen for just a second, but if you want to put it back up for them, you can.
No, I, I believe they've got their own presentation to share.
Okay. Peter's here.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the PowerPoint on my machine, so if I can share that. Get started. So Lisa, are you there?
Yeah, it's up.
Excuse me, Peter. This is Mike at the station. I'm requesting Lisa to unmute. Lisa, are you there?
I am. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we've been asked to prepare an overview of environmental conditions and planning and zoning issues related to the airport. This is based primarily on review of existing reports and documents, but we've also prepared some, some new maps and other diagrams to start pulling together information that we've gotten from county geographic information system, the town geographic information system. And that's really what this presentation is based on. We're really trying to get a handle on what do we know and what do we need to know going forward in order to think clearly about the future of the airport. One sort of basic information data set is sort of where is the airport and what's the context of it? So this is a map showing the 610 acre sort of airport parcel, which is, you know, the largest, one of the largest areas of potential redevelopment remaining in East Hampton. It's also surrounded by a large block of forested land, which is undeveloped yet. A lot of that has been protected by the county, Town of East Hampton and Southampton. If we look at the land use context, this is geographic information system information from the county and the town. So it sort of shows in green is land that's been categorized as recreational open space. This is not all permanently protected, but it's currently in open space or in recreational or other open space use. That's sort of surrounding the, the northern part of the airport. And then largely in Wayne Scott and Southampton, you have a lot of residential parcels in yellow and orange that are people's homes. In the immediate vicinity of the airport, on the property itself, within the airport holdings, there's the Maidstone Glen Club, the East Hampton Airport Industrial Park and the airport facilities themselves. Just outside of the airport, there's a number of significant uses, including the Ross School to the north, the East Hampton indoor tennis facilities, and then the residential streets again in Wayne Scott and Southampton. If we look a little bit closer, you can see the location of those relative to the, the airport facilities. The Maidstone Glen Club occupies a town-owned piece of land just north of the airport. There's County Wells, and we'll talk more about those just on the west side. There's the Airport Industrial Park, which is a number of parcels on the south side. And then the Ross School and the Tennis Club to the east. And then the Wayne Scott Sandpit, just to the south. One of the factors involving the future of the airport is the Airport Industrial Park, which has already been divided up with 33 lots on 55 acres. These are divided in turn into some that are reserved for airport-related uses and some that are not. And there is a number of available parcels, but also a number of parcels that have been, you know, pretty much fully built out. If we look at ownership, this is a map showing sort of the key categories of ownership. It's really a kind of a matrix of different owners. The red is the Suffolk County ownership, the orange, Town of East Hampton, and the, the light yellow is the Town of Southampton with a little bit of sort of institutional nonprofit land sprinkled in. But again, a lot of that land north, northeast, northwest of the airport is publicly owned and a lot of it is in conservation. Now, we want to look at sort of the physical dimension of the future of the airport. What could you build based on topography, soil conditions and so on? So this is looking at the, just the surface elevations from the county elevation data. The parcel is basically goes from a lower elevation of about 20 feet above sea level at Daniel's Hole to another rises about 100 feet to 130 feet in the northwest corner. The airport facilities themselves are in elevation of about 30 feet. If we look at that in, in context, you see that, that high ground in the northwest side is really part of the east-west ridge that traverses the South Fork. And that represents the terminal moraine that was left by the glaciers. And so south of that, you basically have an outwash, outwash plain going toward the coast. And that is also significant because the airport is entirely within the watershed of the Georgia Capon. And that's all of the land where any rain or snow that falls on that land will run downhill and either soak into the ground or find itself traveling over the surface of the ground or in drainage structures toward Georgia Capon. Now Lisa's going to talk a little bit about how that context really relates to the conservation values of the airport property.
So in this aerial view, you can see the clearing for the airport in proximity to Georgia Capon. You can also see the clearing for the former sand mine site. And Georgia Capon has experienced harmful algal blooms, low oxygen levels, excessive bacteria levels. And the largest sources of pollution stem from groundwater flow and stormwater runoff. So in addition to Georgia Capon water quality, the conservation values of the airport include factors such as drinking water supplies, grassland vegetation, pine barrens, passive recreation and open space. Next slide. All of Long Island is a sole source aquifer, meaning that our drinking water is derived from the aquifers beneath the land that we live on. And beneath Long Island, there are three water-bearing aquifers. But in East Hampton, only two of them are potable. That means drinkable, that they don't have salt in them. And those starting from the top are the upper glacial aquifer and the Magathie. So we've got already more limited reserves than western Long Island. And this is here a topographic map of the top of the groundwater aquifers. And as you can see, on the South Fork, there's only one contour line indicating that just, we have a very thin lens of groundwater on the South Fork. Next slide. So this is also a contour line of the Magathie aquifer, which also contains fresh water, but only in the western portion of the town. There isn't potable water in the Magathie, in Montauk, in Amagansett, in Springs or northwest. And that red circled area is about where the airport is. What's really showing in the central portion of this contour line of where the groundwater reserves are, indicating that's about the deepest reserves. Next slide, please. So the, the next layer of groundwater, which is closest to the top, is called the upper glacial aquifer. It lies above the Magathie and it's right below the surface of the ground. And again, oop, that, that red area is supposed to be showing where the airport is, but it got moved over, so. As we know, the airport is not in Bridgehampton. It's, it's further to the east. I don't know if I'm able to show it with my pointer here. But the, in the upper glacial aquifer as well, the airport is really central to the deepest reserves of where that is. There's only a 10-foot groundwater contour line or isn't a 20-foot contour line in East Hampton. And the, the airport is over the deepest reserves for both of the two potable aquifers that we have in the town. There are no barriers to runoff. There's nothing that discharges, there's very little that keeps what happens on the land from infiltrating down into the upper glacial aquifer. Next slide, please. So groundwater has two components to its movement. It moves vertically, meaning down, and horizontally. And as we already spoke about Georgia Capon, the horizontal movement of the groundwater from the airport area moves towards Georgia Capon. But there's also a, a vertical component of the groundwater that moves. And the closer that you are to the groundwater divide, which is that red dashed line that's kind of going east-west, means the more vertical component, more of the deep groundwater recharge going down, not only into the upper glacial, but to the Magathie, which are deeper reserves, that the recharge will take place. Next slide, please. Okay, so again, this is showing the same thing, that recharge really where the, the groundwater divide is in relation to the airport. And that means they'll have a deeper component of where the recharge is going. The airport lies over the deepest groundwater reserves and the soils and the substrates have excellent recharge qualities. So the land serves as a major recharge zone to both the aquifers that we have for drinking water. Next slide, please. So this has also been recognized by Suffolk County Water Authority. They have a well field in this area that is surrounded by the airport, that little chunk of land that's taken out. It is a, a substantial well field that provides drinking water, not just to Wayne Scott, but as part of an interconnected system that provides water to all of East Hampton and the region. Next slide. And the Water Authority has proposed a 2 million gallon storage tank for this well field to supply water and provide additional needed capacity. So in effect, this infrastructure will increase the reliance on this well field for the water supply. And preserving large blocks of wooded land surrounding the well field provides the highest quality of groundwater recharge. Peter's going to talk a little bit about the vegetation now.
Right, so one of the interesting aspects of this is that it's a sort of a remnant of the vegetation, which used to cover the entire South Fork as well as much of Long Island. And in 1930, as shown on the, on the left, the airport site was completely forested. On 1938, the completed clearing for the airport, as you see on the, on the right there, sort of accidentally resulted in a much more diverse plant community with grasslands that surrounded the airport and pine barrens around the periphery of the runways. Today, this has been recognized as a really interesting globally rare ecosystem that's grown up on the runways, as often happens with airports, because they're undisturbed and because the, the soil was never really amended or improved. The native plants really took hold there. And it's been maintained, you know, with occasional mowing, but otherwise it's been left untouched. And this has resulted in a large number of endangered or threatened species of concern being identified, including 56 native plants. It's really that sandy soil, again, that was sort of left behind, contained the seeds of these plants that sprouted and have been growing there ever since. And it's also true that pine barrens have been undisturbed since the clearing surrounding the airport. And these as part of a recognized sort of regional resource of fire-dependent pitch pine and mixed oak located on sandy and infertile soils. And that also has its own sort of variety of interesting and uncommon plant and animal species. Another resource of this open space surrounding the airport is the recreational value of trails. And this is a map that was prepared by the Town of East Hampton, which shows existing recreational trails sort of looping north of the airport, most important of which is probably the East Hampton, the Sag Harbor Trail. Comes off Montauk Highway, wraps around the airport and then goes up, connects to the Puma Nook Path. There's also a loop to the Buckskill Preserve and then the so-called Tower Trail, which follows the power lines. All of which sort of recognizes, it is actively used and is maintained by the town with mowing, removing of town trees. There are trailhead kiosks. And pretty much these three major recognized trail systems traverse east side and in the north of the existing airports, the Sag Harbor, East Hampton Trail, the Buckskill Loop and the Tower Trail. So those are kind of the existing sort of conservation values. And Lisa will talk more about the, the sort of regulatory overlays that impinge on the airport. But we start to look at what could you do in the future that's really impacted by specific zoning and regulatory constraints. So these include the fact that 97 acres is zoned for parks and conservation. The rest of the site is zoned, 513 acres is zoned for commercial industrial use. And then you have that water recharge overlay district, which Lisa will talk more about, which incorporates most of the site other than the industrial park. And then there are wetlands and wetland setbacks, Daniel's Hole, which is probably the only major wetland on the site. And then 47 acres that are subject to some restrictions under the Superfund designation that they received. So each of these things will affect future development in different ways. Lisa's going to talk a little bit more about some of the significant designations that apply to the airport area.
So we were mentioning a lot of the unique characteristics that are found on the airport, and these have been recognized, not just by the town, but by the state and the county. And they've formulated regulations, laws, policies, and plans. So the area is part of the New York State Special Groundwater Protection Area, the Suffolk County Pine Barrens area, the Town Water Recharge Overlay District, which I'll also explain, is part of a critical environmental area. It's part of the town's priority drinking water protection area, and the Town Comprehensive Plan has recommendations for part of the areas that should be permanently protected. Next slide, please. So here's a depiction of where the Special Groundwater Protection Area is in East Hampton and in Southampton. As you can see, they're broad areas that it applies to, but the largest block of land left in East Hampton, which is the airport, offers the greatest opportunity to realize and implement these protection goals that are critical for all of East Hampton's. Next slide. Oh, wait, so I'm sorry. So what the plan that was done for the Special Groundwater Protection Area recommends is that the counties and towns continue to acquire and preserve the woodlands in the area. And as Peter was showing in the earlier slide, both Southampton Town and East Hampton Town have preserved large blocks of land around this. If there is to be any sort of development, use every technique that planning offers in terms of transferring development out of this area to preserve large blocks of land, to rezone the land, if it is zoned for commercial industrial, to some sort of residential use, to the lowest density, the lowest impact that you can legally do, and that you limit any sort of commercial and industrial uses to those areas that are already so developed. And as I've mentioned before, there is the large former sand pit area that's just to the south of the airport. Next slide, please. So again, the Suffolk County Pine Barrens is recognized that this is a very important area, it's a groundwater recharge area with a unique natural ecological community that has natural ecological and aesthetic values, and that it's under increasing development pressures that threatens these resources. Next slide, please. And the policies that are recommended by the county would be, again, this is reiterated of what we just said, concentrate development near existing roads, existing development, keep large blocks of open space open, to restrict the amount of clearing that is permitted with any sort of development, 65%, and to limit the amount of vegetation that's requiring fertilization to 15%. Next slide, please. So the town has also recognized that there are large areas of disproportionate amount of groundwater recharge, and we were mentioning that earlier, the special qualities this particular parcel has. And so there are regulations to help protect these resources. Next slide. So if there are subdivisions, to do what's called the open space plan, to preserve as much a large block as you can and keep the development tightly clustered, to restrict clearing to just 50% of the lots, and to restrict buildings to the maximum of 30% of a lot area. Next slide, please. So it has also been designated as a critical environmental area, which has legal requirements that before there is any sort of development in these areas, that the decision makers come up with a finding that the development will not have a threat to human health, it will not diminish wildlife habitat, forests and vegetation, open space, areas of important aesthetic or scenic quality, that it won't impact recreational or educational values or inherent ethological, geological, or hydrological sensitivity. So again, we're talking about the importance of this parcel with all of these traits. These would have to be found to be the minimum impacts to the areas. Next slide, please. And the Town Comprehensive Plan has recognized the importance of this area. The town looked at what are the priority drinking water areas in all of the town and designated these areas in red as being the highest importance. So you have some of them on the airport property, the 97 acres that's near the power line road, and the 107 acres that are north of Daniel's Hole Road, because of many of the qualities that we've already discussed that those land areas have. And the fact that they're protected within a large block of land actually increases its importance and significance. Next slide. These are those two parcels that were just mentioned. So they should be forever protected according to the Town Comprehensive Plan. Next slide, please. So additional considerations for protection that the town has always taken into consideration, or the grassland communities that Peter was mentioning, it's a globally rare ecosystem. And when the town identifies such features, they do their best to protect it, to acquire it, or to not allow any sort of development in it. The other is that it's the largest block of intact pine barrens in East Hampton that has a large number of unique and rare species as well. It's a preserving large blocks, there are few opportunities to do that, but this is part of a large block already, and that's a reserve. So preservation of these two ecosystems is supported by the town's policies and practices to preserve natural biodiversity and significant ecological communities. And the Town Comprehensive Plan recommends protecting pine barrens, site type, and biodiversity within Wayne Scott, and diminishment or disruption of these ecosystems could have large adverse environmental impacts on biodiversity and the groundwater resources in the town. Next slide, please. So in sum, the area of the airport is one of the most intense uses of land where the aviation activities occur. But the undeveloped setting of the airport includes very important conservation resources, including the Georgia Capone watershed, critical drinking water reserves, and public water infrastructure, a unique grassland ecosystem, East Hampton's largest area of pine barrens, and established trails and recreation open space. The airport park and other private lands that are primarily south of the airport host a variety of commercial, industrial, and recreational and institutional unit uses. And there are many opportunities for redevelopment and expansion in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Lisa and Peter?
Lisa, is that section of CI Zone property that is to sort of the northeast, is that pine barrens? I was trying to do an overlay to see.
Yes, yes. Really, everything that's not grasslands or improved is part of pine barrens.
So I just want to thank Lisa and Ashley and Deputy Supervisor Kathy Berg Gonzalez for working with Lisa this last week. We spent several hours going over this presentation. And part of the thing that, and I again thank Kathy for making sure that the leased properties map was added to it. If you'll look at the deer fence, we wanted to make sure that people understood that's not the current deer fence that's there. It isn't that Lisa was not aware of the deer fence, or Dawson and Flinker, but that they wanted to be able to show through the fence, the older fence that was replaced, the biodiversity that existed at the airport. So we went through it and just wanted to make sure that any information that we've heard of ourselves was added to the presentation or made clear, that people understood. There were a couple of things that might have been misunderstood in the presentation, but again, thank Lisa for working with us for that couple of hours last week and making sure that, we hope, we caught everything except the airport being in Bridgehampton.
Sorry about that.
And I'm not sure if it happened just because of the reprinting, or I have to go back now and see if things that we changed. But again, you know, a lot of time and effort was spent on this, and it's really a valuable tool, I think, for the community to look at.
Yeah, I'd just like to add a comment or two. Having known Lisa and worked with her in the planning department for 30 years or more, there's nobody that has the comprehensive knowledge that exists at the town of East Hampton. And I think this report really reflects that. And I really appreciate the time that she has taken on it to give us a very comprehensive view of the environmental constraints on the property, which are many and important. And I can't leave Peter Flinker out of this. As a member of the dream team, he was a much better as well, handled difficult controversies in the Hamlet studies that he was involved in. And he's the right person for the task of later working out into small groups for public engagement and managing that engagement in an orderly way. Between the two of these, two consultants, I think we'll get accurate and organized reports back so that we can kind of digest public comments. So I really appreciate the professionalism and nice to still be working with you after all this time, Lisa.
Lisa, how many cleared acres are there at the airport?
I'm sorry, how many cleared acres?
Cleared acreage.
I don't have the acreage of clearing.
If you could just add that to me, get that to me, or even add this in at some point, we could put that up there. I think that's another criteria we would like to know. I would like to know also. I know about the woodlands, as you mentioned, the 107 and 96, but the amount of cleared acreage would be also nice to be able to compute to if you can.
When you say cleared, are you talking about improved with pavement or buildings?
Well, that's a parcel of both out. Okay, so, you know, we can go with the total amount of improved area, and then also cleared acreage. And you can just get us those numbers so we can get that to the public also.
Okay.
With that, so you don't want to include like the gun club area, not just the working airport area?
You know, I'm more concerned with the working airport area.
That's what I thought you had when you said it. I have to say, I'm glad to see that you added in that Special Groundwater Protection study, the restrictions from that, that document is a really important document for decades. The blue book is in my office, and it's a great reference book. So I'm really glad to see that you took it out and put the recommendations in here. It's an important document.
So what I'd like to say also, that this is a draft document, you know, and we welcome comments from the community on what Lisa and Peter have laid out for us. I know AMAC has a meeting coming up on August 13th. I would imagine it'll be on the agenda for discussion. And, you know, I'm sure some of us are tuning into those meetings, and those that can't will report back when it's discussed. But just like the economic study and the carbon emissions study, we're looking for public input.
Yep, I'm glad you said that, Kathy. It's, there are all these reports you want to make sure the public knows are not written in stone, and not the final word, and we'll take comments and add that information.
When?
Well, we, you know, as Bill stated when he did the opening to this presentation, we have, at AMAC, it came out that we were, we were asked to compare the inputs between East Hampton Community Alliance's economic study and the town's study that was commissioned, and if there was a way to be able to like have the input side by side, so for the layperson to be able to understand that. We have directed HRNA to do that, and as Bill had said, that that should be coming shortly.
Your question is, when can we give our input on this report?
Oh, anytime, just write to us.
I'm glad, right now.
You know what, you're here.
I just have two more questions, Lisa, that we could add to it.
After you.
I would like to also see in that, as far as, is there a flow rate calculation that we have for the property, for the developed property right now?
Are you talking about sewage flow rate capacity for the entire?
For the current uses that are on the property right now. And then also, also, coverage space of the actual airport itself, meaning hangars, airport, what is the total GFA that is on the airport property right now, too? I don't know if gross floor area is the right thing to look at, but covered area, that's what I'm looking for, because I know some of it might be storage, might not be habitable living space, but however you can get that best defined to be, Lisa.
Total coverage.
Total coverage space.
Total coverage.
So Lisa, I do think that the flow rate might be a little difficult. John, you may want to work with Lisa. There are few things we've discovered that some folks put in bathrooms without going to the planning department, and so that they are not legally, they're not legal bathrooms. So there is flow that's happening on that property without benefit of the community and of the planning department.
Just to clarify, though, because some of the questions were towards the industrial park, and some were for the entire 610 acres. So are you looking at excluding the industrial park from the flow area or including it?
Excluding. I would exclude it.
Okay.
That's my request. I don't know about other board members.
I mean, we can add to it if we need to, and we should have that number anyway from the planning department, because they have all gone through side plans with you, so we should have that.
It's easy to mind, yes.
Unless things have been added, yeah.
Nina, did you want to address the board?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I didn't hear much about the gun club. The gun club, if you look at an aerial photograph, you can see the pollution that results from the gun club. It is all the excess paper products and lead that comes from the shotgun use. And if you're going to survey the lead that aircraft cause from the airport, no, I've heard nothing about a lead survey, someone going out there and coming up with an estimate of the amount of lead and other pollutants that are on the gun club property. And that needs to be addressed, too. Not only that, when I go hiking, well, maybe about three miles away in the woods in the northwest, I hear the shooting at the gun club. And I'm talking about on the weekend, when there's thousands of visitors also hiking in the woods or at the beach. So is that not a pollutant factor? Is that about the quality of life here on the East End? Those gunshots are more disturbing than an aircraft flying over. We know what an airplane is, we know what a helicopter is. When we hear gunshots, we wonder, who's dying? What is that? I mean, I know what it is, because I know the direction of the gun club, but our visitors don't know that. Not only that, I've heard shooting over in the Springs. There's, I don't know why they're shooting. I think they're using guns to alert the sailors that are practicing offshore, off the shore in the Springs. So I could show you where the club is, the salmon club is. They use guns. And I'm hiking in Hither Hills, and I'm hearing gunshots. Why is this not addressed? Thank you.
Thanks. I'm just trying to, you know, I took a really good look at this report, which I think is a good report, it's very even-keeled, it's very informational. But, you know, some of the things that kind of stood out to me were... But, you know, some of the things that kind of stood out to me were that, you know, based on the six criteria, which is like the town's comprehensive plan, the town's DWPA, that calls for 204 acres to be preserved, which leaves 406 acres to be developed. And then when you look at the SPGA and the SCPC, that, you know, restricted to 65% clearing, which I think that was a good question by you, Mr. Lee, about trying to find out how much is already cleared, because I mean, you're pretty much already there of the remaining 400 acres of 65 and 50%. And then it looks at the, the WRCD also talks about that up to 30% of the land can be developed or can be constructed upon. I did some quick, just back of a nap in math, and that would equate to someone being able to build over 1,000, 500,000 square foot homes on that property. That still fits the 30%, requirement, which is just shocking to me. It seems, I mean, I was very glad to hear that somebody else acknowledged besides us. I know that us at the, at the airport community have long been pushing the fact that we have such a rare grassland there and that there's 70, we calculated there were 63 protected and endangered species on our property. We were, I wasn't aware there were 77 protected and endangered species on our property. And that, I think this report very correctly pointed out the fact that if, if this is disturbed or not protected with our fencing and the fact that no one can go out there, people and their dogs can't walk through there, hikers can't walk through there, bikes can't go through there, that's all protected. If that's lost and the airport is moved and that land is opened up to humans and deer and dogs and people and everything else, you know, vehicles and bicycles, all that can be lost. Plus, if it's not mowed, as they said specifically periodically, which the airport does, it's going to revert back to pine bams. You're going to lose that entire grassland ecosystem. So it just seems that the current existence of an airport, you know, the fact that the airport exists there, what's created this ecosystem is what's protecting this ecosystem. And that's what this report is pretty much said. So I would just hope the town board keeps this in mind. I mean, we all have to find an answer to this problem and we want to work together to try and find an answer to this problem. And there's something that's going to have to be given on each side and we're going to have to find some middle ground and we have to find a way to make this happen. But losing this protected ecosystem by entirely removing an airport and not being an airport that could protect that, I think would be a very, very poor choice for the future of our, our region and for our environment.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else?
It's quick. I just wanted to point out that the largest helicopter that comes and goes from the airport is owned by someone who lives not far from the airport on a 62 acre piece of property. The adjacent properties are only one acre zone. So if he can't land his helicopter there, sell it, subdivide, and you'll have 62 new homeowners logging the highway.
So Lisa and Peter, thank you. Bill, we really appreciate you joining us today. And let's move on to the next piece of business, which is a presentation by Lauren Steinberg, the HVAC replacement policy for municipal buildings in East Hampton.
You guys aren't staying for that?
Oh, we love that HVAC.
Oh, we love that HVAC.
Just one second, there was a little bit of a feedback. This is Mike at the station. Lena, I had to mute you for a minute for some reason. If you have the broadcast on television in your home or wherever you are, could you just make sure you adjust on the Zoom call, please? Thank you. And I'm going to ask to unmute your mic now if you want to open your mic back up, Lena.
And I have a, just a few quick slides that I'm going to share again here. We'll give it a try. Can everybody see those?
Yes.
Lauren, do you just want to introduce, I didn't realize you were having others join you. You want to introduce who you've got with you to present?
Yes, definitely. So just want to thank the board really quickly for the opportunity to present the Energy Sustainability Committee's recommendation to the town board on electrifying municipal building heating systems, joined by Energy Sustainability Committee Chair Paul Muniz and Committee Member Lena Tabori. Like I said, I just want to start with a quick presentation on some background on the advantages of heat pumps. So over 30% CO2 emissions are produced as a result of heating and cooling buildings, making the transition away from fossil fuels. For heating through electrification is a crucial step in reducing greenhouse gas emissions that drive global warming and climate change. The New York State already has some of the cleanest electricity in the country. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which was passed in 2019, calls for 100% zero emission electricity statewide by 2040. Electrifying sectors that have historically been powered by fossil fuels like space and water heating, starting now, will accelerate emission reductions as more and more electricity throughout the state is produced through renewables. So electric heat pumps are a highly efficient alternative to fossil fuel burning heating systems, both for space and water heating as well as air conditioning for both homes and commercial buildings. Becoming increasingly more common are air source heat pumps and ground source heat pumps, which are also known as geothermal systems. And as their name suggests, air source heat pumps pull heat from the air and geothermal from the ground to provide space heating in colder months and in warmer months, those heat pumps flow in reverse for cooling. Heat pumps offer several advantages over fossil fuel fired heating systems. One unit can provide both heating and cooling. There's no need for fuel tanks or lines. There's no onsite burning of fuel, which means there's no risk of generating carbon monoxide. And when electricity comes from a renewable source, these systems produce zero CO2 emissions. Heat pumps can utilize existing ductwork in a home or building or be ductless. And even though currently heat pumps have a higher upfront cost than conventional heating systems like oil, gas, or electric baseboard heating, they're up to four times more energy efficient and are low maintenance. So payback is provided by savings in operational and maintenance costs. Heat pumps use a small amount of electricity, which can be offset if paired with solar or energy storage. Air source heat pumps, or more specifically cold climate air source heat pumps, which are ideal for New York's climate, work by extracting heat from the air outside and moving it inside. During the warmer months, this process is reversed to provide cooling by pulling heat out of the air inside. Air source heat pumps can be used to heat or cool single rooms, zones, or whole buildings. They run on electricity. There's no onsite fossil fuel combustion, so there's no direct emissions produced, reducing the building's carbon footprint. Also, as mentioned, they're more energy efficient than conventional heating systems and there are PSCG rebates available for cold climate air source heat pump equipment. And so I have a few, one for each heat pump, short videos, 90 seconds, that I think are a really good introduction into these sort of technologies, if the board doesn't mind, that I play.
Sure. Thanks, Lauren.
Okay, thanks.
There are many ways to heat and cool your home. Air source heat pumps move heat between the outside and inside of your home to keep your home a comfortable temperature all year round. Recent technology advancements in air source heat pumps now make them a strong alternative for space heating in colder regions like New York State. Ducted air source heat pumps are central systems that provide heating and cooling through your existing ductwork. Ductless heat pumps, also known as mini splits, are an example of an air source heat pump system that consists of two units, a slim outdoor condenser and an indoor air handler. Ducted and ductless air source heat pumps have several benefits over conventional HVAC systems. They're quiet to operate and highly efficient because they move heat rather than convert it. There's no combustion of fossil fuels, which leads to safer operations and cleaner air and a lower carbon footprint. It also means that you can save money on your heating bill if your home is currently heated with fuel oil or propane. On top of that, what's unique about mini splits is that the indoor air handling unit is in the same room that is being heated or cooled. This indoor unit is connected to the outdoor condenser through a small opening in the wall or ceiling behind it. This means that mini splits don't require ductwork to carry warm or cold air throughout the home. No ductwork means that mini splits are very space-saving and flexible in where they can be placed, making them perfect for renovations and home additions. Are you interested in learning more about a ducted or ductless air source heat pump for your home? Here are some tips to keep in mind. Work with an HVAC contractor in your area to size the unit appropriately and be sure to pick an air source heat pump system that is designed for a cold climate.
And in addition, ground source heat pumps, which are also known as geothermal, work similarly to air source heat pumps, but rather than extracting heat from the air, heat's extracted from the ground during the winter, because the ground is a more constant temperature than the air. Ground source heat pumps work through underground piping systems that extract and release heat depending on whether they're heating or cooling. And there are several options to accommodate the space that may be available for a ground source heat pump pipe system, like horizontal pipes, verticals, or looped pipe system. Ground source heat pumps also provide cooling in the summer from the same unit by releasing heat from inside the building into the ground. And like air source heat pumps, ground source heat pumps are much more efficient than gas or oil and don't involve any onsite burning of fossil fuels. And PSCNG does have rebates available for these systems as well. Just like with air source, I have another quick video for ground source, which I think is a good introduction of this technology.
Heating and cooling your home account for more than half the energy in a typical home, making it the largest expense and largest greenhouse gas emitter. But did you know that even though the weather around us changes throughout the year, the ground underneath is able to stay at a constant temperature all year round? That's because the ground soaks up 44% of the sun's rays and stores it like a battery. What if we were able to put this ground battery to good use? That's exactly what a ground source heating and cooling system does. How does it work? An underground pipe system is installed to access the ground's constant temperatures. In the summertime, the earth is cooler than your home, so excess heat from the home is transferred to the ground. As the warmer water comes into contact with the ground, it naturally cools off, which then returns to your home to extract more heat from the house. In the wintertime, the earth is warmer than the outside air, so heat from the ground can be transferred to your home to heat it up. The closed loop system is providing a continuous supply of warmer temperature to your home. By taking advantage of the sun's energy that's stored underground, ground source heating and cooling systems bring homeowners many benefits. They're quieter and more efficient to operate. In fact, for every unit of energy that these systems use, they can provide three to four and a half times that in heating or cooling energy. Their emissions free at your home, reducing your carbon footprint. They also require less maintenance and last longer because the system is protected from the weather. Lastly, they cost much less to operate. Ground source heat pumps can be installed in existing homes and buildings and new construction.
The town of East Hampton actually is working on launching a green heating and cooling community campaign to increase awareness of heat pump space and water heating options for residential and commercial properties and to help the community with things like selecting an installer and potentially even saving money, similar to what our Solarize East Hampton campaign offers for solar panels. There are several of these heating cooling campaigns endorsed by New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, currently active throughout New York State. And in addition, many municipalities, in their role of being leaders by example, are replacing fossil fuel burning heating systems in their municipal buildings with heat pumps, as well as including them in new building designs. On Long Island, the town of Hempstead installed a ground source heat pump for heating and cooling at their Department of Conservation and Waterways administrative building. And the town of Southampton installed a variable refrigerant flow air source heat pump for heating and cooling their town hall. In East Hampton, we have, actually at the CDCH building that the town acquired a few years ago, a geothermal system for heating and cooling. So municipalities can make significant reductions in the greenhouse gas emissions of their buildings by replacing fossil fuel heating systems with heat pumps and save on operational and maintenance costs. This has been a topic of discussion within the Energy Sustainability Committee for some time, and the committee has issued a recommendation to the town board for consideration for advancing the electrification of municipal building heating systems through heat pumps as the primary heating cooling systems of its buildings. The majority of municipal buildings are currently heated using natural gas, propane, or fuel oil. So the recommendation to the board from the committee includes that when the, when a municipal building is in need of having an existing fossil fuel fired heating system or air conditioning system replaced, replacement with electric heat pumps is pursued as the building's primary heating and cooling system. In addition, any new buildings or even additions to existing buildings include electric heat pumps as the primary heating and cooling system. And that the town engaged with engineers on the feasibility and design of heat pump systems for its municipal buildings to ensure that the right system is selected to properly meet the heating and cooling needs of that particular building. So I'd like to now turn it over to Paul and then to Lena, who would like to add to the Energy Sustainability Committee's support for the board to accept this recommendation and then take any questions if the board has.
Thanks, Lauren, and thank you again to the town board for having us today. I just wanted to say real quickly that the Energy Sustainability Committee recognizes its responsibility in aiding the town to reach a very ambitious goal of meeting the equivalent of 100% annual community wide energy consumption with renewable energy sources by 2030. And because of this recognition, the committee recommends the implementation of this policy to electrify HVAC systems in existing and new municipal buildings. We feel that the electrification of municipal building HVAC equipment, both when systems are in need of being replaced and when designing and construction new buildings, not only moves the town closer to its renewable energy goals, but it also offers the town the unique opportunity to lead by example in a transition away from fossil fuels. An example that is critical in fighting climate change, climate change being an adversary that the town recognized back in 2015 with the approval of the Town of East Hampton Climate Action Plan, and most recently declared that a climate and ecological emergency threatens our town, region, state, nation, civilization, humanity, and natural world in its climate emergency declaration. In conclusion, this is a small step in the fight against climate change, but the example set by the town in adopting this policy would be a huge step towards raising community awareness, support, and commitment by its own residents to also transition away from fossil fuels when their HVAC systems are in need of being replaced or when designing and construction, constructing a new home. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your time.
Lena, if there's anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, we'll just throw in a couple of things. Paul and Lauren have really said it all. I love that Lauren showed two videos, which basically looked at homes principally as the place in which the conversion was being done. We're asking you to consider municipal buildings, which are larger, of course, and more significant in requirement, I think, on a multitude of levels, but it feels like the right start somehow. I should call to your attention that we are not alone here. It started in Berkeley, California. There's been lots of lawsuits there in regard to the banning of fossil fuels from new construction. They've won in each part of those litigations. Fossil fuel interests are not happy about this transition to electric, obviously, and the purpose for the transition to electric, obviously, is to make it possible for renewables to fill that energy pipe, which it cannot do if gas and oil are the primary sources of energy. So it becomes sort of incumbent upon all of us to take these steps concurrently, both electrifying everything and simultaneously moving forward on renewables. The town has done such a stunning job in terms of the support it's provided to offshore wind and, and also, I mean, a number of our recommendations the town has taken and moved forward on. This is another one, I would anticipate that it proceeds. I would anticipate that it precedes a recommendation we might make sometime later to ask that new buildings be electrified, so that the building codes are altered in that regard. This is not that. This is solely looking at municipal buildings and suggesting that when they need replacement, they look towards electricity to replace. I did it myself, by the way, in my own home last August, which has been hilarious. My gas bill is now $18 a month, which I think is hysterical. I can't put solar on my house, so I don't have that benefit. But of course, if you had solar and also electrified your HVAC systems, you would probably be energy-free. It's the right thing for us to be doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena. Thanks, Lena.
I just have to, for Lauren, I know we discussed this, I think, when we were discussing residential heat pumps, and my question there was brought back to a March document that was through Newsday as to how the increase of the ratepayer would be for the electricity. And two, I know we're municipal government, looking for municipal government properties right now, so that's gonna be a little bit different as far as that. But there's two projects that we have ongoing right now, that I think we should start to look into this, and we will, for our templates for future use, and they're both gonna be historical properties. The first one's gonna be Second House in Montauk. That's the one that we're gonna be looking at, probably installing a new heating system first on any other property. So I look forward, continue that discussion with that. But I think we should also make sure that we understand what the energy consumption might change by using that, so we can budget that into our yearly budget also in our Buildings and Grounds Department, because that will affect that. We want to make sure we acknowledge that also, if that might change.
Yeah, that's definitely something to keep track of, you know, the switch from having to purchase oil or gas or natural gas and how that's gonna differ with a heating system that runs on electricity.
And eventually, it might be even a savings on it, but just so that we can budget correctly, you know, that's something we would want to look at also. But thank you for bringing that.
So the resolution that we're not voting on today, but a resolution that we might consider in the future and have another work session on it if you want to, just to go over the resolution itself, so that we can add this as a policy. We now have a policy for electric cars, when we can purchase those, and this would be something to add to that policy for, you know, our Climate Smart designation as well. So we want to keep moving forward with that. So that is also in your package if you want to move up the resolution.
This was very timely for me, since I had a person over at my house today to talk about the geothermal system, so I'll let you down the road.
It's actually timely for me as well. When Friday, when Lauren sent the materials around, I also had my other, you know, proposal from McLean for the YMCA, and for a second I panicked, I'm like, oh my gosh, we're gonna put this policy into effect, and here we're going, you know. I was concerned that we weren't gonna be able to, we weren't following it, but it turns out that the preferred option, you know, does use air source heat pumps, and what Matt Jedlica had shared with me from McLean, one of the engineers, that all the HVAC upgrades or installations that McLean has been proposing in recent years have been in line with the recommendations by the Energy Sustainability Committee, so.
That's right.
Yeah, and I think that really speaks to the direction that the industry's moving into, that we're not, you know, proposing the use of these super high-tech, you know, modern equipment, that this is something that is being recommended by engineers, you know, throughout the state.
I should mention also that I was prompted to make this change when my air conditioning system kept failing, and I kept having to add freon to it, and there was still a leak somewhere in the system, which they didn't know where was, and consequently, I had to sort of address the whole subject. So one of the advantages also of this is that people are gonna give up an old air conditioning system inevitably that is producing really very toxic chemicals into, I mean, the refrigerants that are being used in the old systems are really something we want to be rid of.
All right, well, that's it. We're gonna thank you folks for joining us today, being so patient, and we'll move on to the next topic. Thanks, everyone. I really appreciate it.
Thanks. John, Rough Riders request for flood mitigation road improvement.
Okay, we had a request from council for Rough Riders. They have a problem in front of the condominium, it's always flooding, and of course, it becomes worse in the wintertime when it floods and freezes, it's like a, you know, frozen lake.
John, ask for a microphone by you.
Yeah.
I just didn't see it.
So they had inquired as to whether the town would consider a road improvement district to elevate the road and put a drainage and address the flooding problem in front of the condominium. So I contacted our engineers, who took a look at the problem and gave me a draft proposal or estimated cost. And based on that, I gave that back to the condominium council, and he brought it to the condo, the owners as a whole. There are 147 units in the complex, and essentially, the total estimated improvement cost, which includes a 20% contingency, is about $285,500. So if we were to proceed with using that figure, it would be a cost of approximately $140 per year for each unit owner over a 15-year period, which is the amortization period according to our bond council. So George Biondo brought that back to the board, who, I guess, my understanding was presented informally to a vote of all the unit owners to get an idea if they have an interest. It was overwhelming, it was supported by the unit owners to do this improvement work. So they've asked that if the town board would consider moving the district forward, they'd like to proceed with that. So really, next steps are kind of under Town Law 200, we're gonna need to get, we should have a petition from the property owners. My understanding is they all did sign something for the board indicating the yes, you know, support of the project, but we'll go through the formal process if the board's inclined to move forward with that.
So do we have the engineering maps yet?
We don't have that yet, no. We just basically have the conceptual engineering estimate at this point. If there's an interest of moving it forward, we'll get into more details with what the improvements would consist in.
Because it would be more, right? Because the construction is 285,500, but the engineering would be additional?
Or is that including the engineering?
I don't see a line item for engineering on here. I just see construction costs.
Yeah, well, it would, yeah, there would be, I guess there would be additional engineering. So we actually, I don't know if that was built back in.
Well, it says conceptual engineer estimates, so I'm assuming that they gave these estimates based on a plan that they may have.
Well, I guess it's also not the first time that they've worked with the flooding problem, because they mentioned that they had data from a previous review.
This has been ongoing, and I know Rough Riders and John Allen in particular, who I've worked with, and trying to get an answer to this, this may be the way to get the answer that Rough Riders needs.
I think this really involves a lot of elevation of the roadway too, together with the drainage, because it sits so low, it almost sits in groundwater.
So we would, we form the entity and then the bonding?
We would, yeah, we would create the district. We'd have to have, you know, we'd go through a process, the public, and I know there's a couple of unit owners who are not supportive, but overwhelming majority were. Basically, we'd need to lay out the proposed district, the properties to be included. Now, this request came from the condominium. There are, of course, adjoining property owners, depending on how big we make the district and how far we go. They basically came in and said, look, we know that there may be people, neighbors, that support it or don't support it, and we really would just like to get it done, and we're willing to foot the bill for it. And they had requested that we look at the district cost that way, so as if they were paying the whole thing. You may review it and decide that maybe we need to include a few other properties in the district, which would, of course, bring the overall per-unit cost down.
And then do we do the bonding?
We do the bonding. We do the construction work and just recover the cost as part of the annual tax bill for the units.
And is it like a sewer district? Oh, just an ongoing maintenance is also the responsibility?
Yeah, well, once, yeah, once it's improved, town specs, it actually becomes the general town highway maintenance issue problem, and so it would be paid for in the annual town highway budget.
I see. Okay, so it's not ongoing maintenance as a charge for them, it's just the capital cost?
It's only the capital cost, right. And every, you know, participant typically has the option to pay their full share upfront, and all they're really saving is the interest cost, with the interest cost being as low as they are for the town, probably doesn't make sense for most people, but that option's there for anybody who wants to take it.
And just like we did on Peasants with Lena recently, we have the public hearing, we put it out, I guess, more ties onto their tax bill for the property itself, not necessarily the owner, but it stays with the actual unit or whatever properties we're gonna put into.
It'll stay with the unit itself, so if they sell, the new owner would have it built into the tax bill.
I had the same discussion with Mr. Allen last night also, and he's probably listening.
We actually have someone on the line from Rough Riders, so Mike, if you'd let the caller address the board.
Sure. I see a phone number with the last four digits, 3650, which I'll unmute right now.
Thank you.
Hello, caller with the last four digits, 3650, you're live with the town board.
Hi, yes, how are you? It's Lyndon Restrepo, the property manager.
How are you?
Good, how are you? I was really just on to listen, I really didn't have anything to really discuss, pretty much accurate what everybody has described so far. Yes, we've been trying to get this accomplished for quite some time. It is a very big problem, especially in the wintertime and when it rains. All summer long, people tend to go in and out the complex, the wrong entrance or exit, causing a problem. So yes, we would very much appreciate it if this could move forward and we could get this accomplished, because it's been quite some time. And just probably a question as to how long of a process do you think this would be as far as from, you know, starting? Would it be possible to accomplish something before this winter?
That might be a tough, tough call, because what we would have to do is we have to notice for public hearing, do a public hearing, public hearing on it, then you would have to go out to the engineering, set the taxing district. So, and then the reason why I say winter is because there's then gonna be the paving, the asphalt plants might close, so this might be, this might be more into the spring. That's just my initial reaction to it.
Okay.
Yeah, but the process, you know, the process is starting if the board feels favorably on it right now.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thanks, Lyndon. Thank you.
Talk to the engineers.
No problem. Thank you.
Yeah, if you would talk to the engineers. It sounds like we've got board support for it, John. Okay, next up is the South Fork reform license extension and real estate easement request. I guess that's back to you, John.
Okay, basically, we had done a license agreement with the People of South Fork, People of Wind South Fork, to allow them to do some samplings and surveying work back in 2020. They've asked to have that extended. What they would like to do is look at the properties that the town has ownership of that are adjacent to the MTA right-of-way to see which ones were suitable or might be suitable as some locations for support of the work within the right-of-way. They had initially given us a list of properties, we went through them, and we put some out that we either didn't have control over or were scenic conservation easements or, you know, preserve land. And so that left a few parcels still that might serve to support their activities within the MTA right-of-way when they are putting the cable in. And what they're asking for now is just the license to go onto those properties and do the survey and environmental work within those properties to see whether they'd be suitable for such purposes, and if they were found to be suitable, they would then ask for a temporary license from the town to utilize those properties.
Is there clearing of the property that they're asking for?
Yeah, in some places, there could be. I mean, they'd have to go, you mean just for the initial survey work?
Yeah.
I think they would, they planned to, yeah, it's outlined in their letter, I think they're proposing some, let me see if I can find it. They talked about doing some placement stakes flagging and hand dug test pits. They went, they basically are asking, their summary is to allow the appropriate surveyors, biologist, archaeologist, and environmental scientist to enter the premises to conduct civil surveys, environmental surveys, and all of the surveys and tests necessary for a root study, including placement of states flagging and hand dug test pits.
I guess my question's in line with what Sylvia's, is what's the end result? You know, if the use of the property for storage of their equipment, will it be clearing on the whole entire property of the requests? And I understand the request right now that they're looking to go in and enter the property for surveying in that specific scope, but what is, what's the end result, use of the property? What's the intensity of the use of the property?
Well.
Because I honestly have some reservations in some locations that they picked out.
Yeah, well, that might be something we want to look into more, when Tim has been involved in this, but I don't think planning's really looked at it yet, and we might want to have him take a look.
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, because it's, if you see with each, with each, there's a map attached to their letter, it shows each parcel.
Right.
We're talking about a 25-foot area, 25 foot deep in each instance along the right-of-way. And so there, no doubt, in some instances, there would be clearing here. We did discuss that if there were any, they would have to do a restoration after they're done, but.
That's just for this request, because the request on the attachment, proposed scope of work, tail grant and permission, affiliates agents, employees contracted, biologist, archaeologist, environmental science, enter upon the premises described, civil surveys, environmental surveys, and all the surveys and tests necessary for a root study, including a placement of stakes, flagging, and hand dug test pit. So it's not the clearing of the property.
Not this one. But it could be in the future.
That's a separate license.
Yes, yeah, this is initially for the study. The next approval, if you should be inclined, would be to give them the temporary easement, depending on what these studies show, whether or not it's feasible for them and they want to move forward.
There are also test boards here.
Yeah, they're calling that test pits, right.
Yeah, the test boards I'm not concerned with. I'm concerned with, you know, any clearing that comes up, and I would want it to be very specific, and with not, I mean, we've got several properties that they're looking at, so I'd like to know.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we put this on for next Tuesday's work session and ask them to zoom in and go through each property?
Yeah, I think they should, and make a presentation, and we can ask our questions.
Yeah, let's get some planning.
And fully that.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good. So I'll let them know that we'd like to have them at the next meeting?
Yeah.
By Zoom? Okay.
Thanks, John. Okay, so now let's move on to liaison reports. David, you want to start us off?
Lot of paper.
Sorry. Well, I figured.
All good, all good.
I'd go last, sorry.
Okay, the Montauk CAC met last night. We had the first live in-person meeting in a long time, and actually, it was my first time being their liaison in person, so it's nice to see them. It might not be how we stay with it, but it was good in person. Let's get to those minutes on there.
Did you meet at the Playhouse?
We met at the Montauk Playhouse, inside the gymnasium, inside the gymnasium there.
How many acoustics? Was it hard?
It was. It was, you had to, I felt like I was shouting, but it was, it's the only property that we had that has the size, location, for social distancing, whether the town owns. So it worked, it worked well enough, but I think we're gonna be going back to Zoom for our next meeting. So I want to thank Chief Sarlo. Chief Sarlo came in and spoke to, spoke to the committee about all his, they had a bunch of questions for him about SLA permitting and about how the force is reacting to any of the needs as far as special events, crises at the Montauk and all their operations and too. So the chief went over that very. special events, crises at the Montauk and all their operations and too. So the chief went over that very well, as he always says. I think he did that to, was it to your cutie recently? Did it come to yours?
No.
Okay, I apologize. So the chief came in, but primarily a lot of the discussions started off with litter, a litter discussion. And we had representatives of the MBA, other, other property owners, talking about the litter that was in Montauk. We discussed this last month also, but we discussed it again now. In the last couple of weeks, specifically as liaisons in Montauk, I've worked with buildings and grounds and also sanitation, this is our highway. We get the streets swept, garbage cans, but there's just a plethora of litter on the streets right now. They actually passed a motion. And the motion was, motion, they put a motion in there and we didn't have a quorum, but we had the majority of members pass it with one individual against. Motion was to remove the garbage pails from the ocean facing beaches and road ends in the Montauk area. What they're seeing is a tremendous amount of trash as being piled up at our open beaches outside of the cans. And they would like to do a test of the removing of the cans.
Carry in, carry out.
Carry in, carry in, carry out. There was the discussion on that. Next to that was that when, when is the right time to do so? And I think that's where the town board discussion, I wanted to let you know what their discussion was. It also came to a point where the Montauk Chamber and also our code enforcement are going to go out and try to outreach to business owners because there are sections in the code, it was 167.4, in which businesses that face municipal right-aways have to clean up those right-aways attached to their property. And it's something that might not, you know, businesses and property owners might not be as educated on, but we're going to make that outreach on, out there because it's going to take a lot of help from others out there as far as tapping of the, of the trash and the garbage on there.
So David, just a couple of, if your group wants to talk to recycling and litter committee.
Or energy sustainability.
Well, it's in the sustainability committee. It's a smaller group that's working on the litter part of it. So it's a subcommittee of energy sustainability. They'll, they'll be happy to talk to you and also the experience that we think it might be a stepped thing that you put up the signs, carry in, carry out, leave the trash cans for a while, then take the trash cans away. So.
I'll reach out to Paul and I know that Rich Silver was there too.
Yeah.
Also, so.
And I, I will tell you, I did, the vendors were not putting out their own trash cans. And so they were using all the town trash cans for their trash. It's in their lease. They are to take the trash that is generated by their establishments by, as a vendor, they're supposed to take it away. We are not supposed to be carting that garbage away. So Jeannie Carosa yesterday sent a reminder to the vendors in, at least in Ditch Plain, that they are responsible for that. So hopefully that will help that little area.
Yeah, that was mentioned. I did not have information from the license, so I'll read it, I'll read it into it.
Yeah.
So that then brings me back to Ditch Plains. And I know we mentioned this last week, last meeting about the, a lot of vandalism was happening to the bathrooms there.
Yeah.
And I mentioned it to the committee about closing the bathrooms between hours of 11 o'clock and 5:00 in the morning. And they were all in agreement that the town should actually go through closing the Ditch Plains Ocean bathrooms between those hours.
What were the hours?
11 to 5, 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, which is post any typical gathering that we would have down there. So I wanted to see how the board thought about that action.
We have folks that can, can be there at 11 and 5:00 AM?
Yes. So what happened during COVID last year, we, we coordinated between the last trash pickup, which is typically that timeframe, 10, 11 o'clock at night, and PD. And they would lock the bathrooms and then remetrol or PD would open up first thing in the morning prior to the first trash run, which, which happens 7:00, 7:00 or 9:00 in the morning. So it would just save a lot of vandalism as I think, I don't know if I mentioned it last time. But since then, there was actually a robbery at one of the vendors down there at Ditch. So there's been, there's been a lot of stuff happening down there. So this might be one way. Not too much good, I guess, happens after a certain hour at night too. So any concerns or thoughts if we did that?
No, I would be supportive of that.
Yeah, me too. Okay. All right. So that's mostly what was discussed. Unfortunately, we didn't get to a presentation from CCOM on some of the water quality projects and readings that they're, they're getting in Fort Pond. So hopefully we get to that, that next. Let me just move on to other ones. Let's see here. Rough Riders was a little bit discussed last night with John, John Allen and I discussed that our vandalism was on there. I wanted a little, I know the press release went out. I'm, I'm happy to let the board know that the grant that you all support me in for the Preserve New York Grant for Documentation of Our Historical Burial Grounds, this is put out by Preserve New York and funded by the Robert David Langard our foundation. And we are successful on that then too. So. Yep, no, to, to us all. It's going to be a foundation for, for work to come. There is a portion of the MAPS grant that will be coming from our, our, our town budget that's already budgeted for outside vendors, sorry, outside maintenance. And we're going to be looking to move forward on that in the next five to six months. Next I have to the town, we recently received, the town board received information about southern pine beetles and their infestation right now across many of the properties and they're starting to swarm right now. The town still has use of waivers, assistance for the town dumps, and then also you could contact land management to investigate your properties, let them know if they are being infested by southern pine beetles. Please contact land managers 631-324-4141.
Do we need to do a resolution to extend those waivers or the way, the resolution that's in place is good?
That's, I'll find out for you. Okay. Actually, so I think that's mentioned below. I'll find out for you. Exactly. I found out from op culture that they had, they've had, let me just get this one there. All the shellfish are out of the nursery into the field right now. This great crop of clams and scowls, but relatively light oyster crop due to the die-off after setting. We're trying to find that one out. They recently done a lot of great tours recently with Project Most, the South Fork Natural History Marine Program, and also Bosie's also, and they'll be going out and seeding very shortly. And Parks for Recreation, I do know that we are still looking for seasonal lifeguards. Anyone who's interested in seeing the lifecars, please let us know. And also that we have our competition lifeguard team competing in South Padre Island this week. In a very successful lifeguard tournament down at Indian Wells Beach. And from there, many of the participants and families are moving on to South Padre. Hopefully they come back in Tuesday and with a lot of awards and perfect memories. That's all I have.
Great. So just quickly, I just want to talk about the junior lifeguard program. I know that tournament was last week. Many friends of mine have kids at that age group. And I, I just, and I saw John today as he was in the office and just wanted to, I said it to him, I'll say it to the community because it's so important, the work that they've done. And these kids might be timid in a lot of different ways, timid with water, timid in life. That program gives them so much courage and self-esteem. And that's what I heard back from friends and grandparents that, that also have their grandkids in this program. Just, you know, a big thank you to the Ryan family for all that they've done. That's it.
I could add one more. I apologize. I missed this one. The waterfront advisory committee met last week and we discussed also upcoming discussions we'll have on next week for language changing to our temporary geotextiles, emergency permits that we discussed. And we're going to get some letters of support, recommendations from them. They'll come back too.
Yep.
I met with LTV and it was a happy meeting. They're in good shape financially. They were pulling up their finances and reported their solvents, that their, their income exceeds their expenses, which is good. They got some help from PPP program and they were going through some of the statistics that are important to folks who watch LTV. And one that's certainly was that nearly 80% of the money that they have goes to education programming, which is a pretty high percentage. They're working on a new jazz festival. They've already had an event with Randy Brecker and they have some other big name people coming in. They asked about getting a larger sign on the road. I think it's for the jazz festival that they wanted, not just for LTV. They wanted a sign four by six, but I was just looking at the sign wall and I think that's too big. I think it has to be the max is 20 square feet.
Nine square feet.
So I'll report back to them. I just looked at that. They, they videoed the thinking my school graduation, if it's on, and came off very well. And now you can now watch LTV's program in general. And CTV, which is a major change for them. It's something that they've been aspiring to for years. It's finally going to be out. And there's JP Foster is now on the board, who's the president of the school district, the school board. And LTV is now televising the school board meetings live, which is a big change for them. And he said it was a change for the better. So they're really, and they, they made use of the fiber optics that they installed and have done some programming with some big networks. And so that, that's turned out to be successful as well. So it was a very interesting meeting and we can all watch for the jazz performance. And the slogan, "The summer never sounded so good." And they give out, that's a big, big names. The first, first thing I recognized from years ago in New York is Randy's record and their others. I wanted to talk a little bit about our special events permitting because I've gotten some feedback. On the Novo Drax party, I think you heard that Kathy was prepared to comment on it, but there's, there were some noise problems there and it turned out to be a major concert. Not positive it was open to the public or not. I don't want to give you more details on that. It did have the marching band, but we had not approved.
So the special event committee recommended that we not approve the Ferris wheel and the marching band because it needed a board resolution. It was, it was 500 people over the 250 that triggers board resolution. I discussed it with board members and the board members were comfortable with the marching band. I brought it back to the special event committee, but I think you had missed, I think, the last two meetings. So it was discussed at the, at special events.
I had a feeling that happened. I had conflicts and some other.
Yeah. So can I, if I could add to that, I spoke to Chief Sarl yesterday because, you know, board members, we get an update every Monday morning during the season about the activity over the weekend. And they did receive, it was actually four calls from the public about noise at 5:00 PM, 9:15, 9:45, and 11:08 PM. At P, the police department and code enforcement were working in coordination. Code enforcement took meter readings all four times and the event was in compliance. So there was, you know, yes, calls were made, you know, code enforcement and PD were dispatched, but when they took the meter readings, they were within the decibel levels. I also asked the chief about, were there any other complaints? And there were no issues with traffic.
Did they ask them to, you know, strike up the marching band when they were going to take readings? Or they, did they do it during the Miley Cyrus concert itself?
Well, the, according to their schedule, the, the mainline act was supposed to go on at 9:15. So I would think that maybe the 9:15 and the 9:45 calls may have been, you know, at the time of Miley Cyrus's performance. But again, you know, they were within the decibel level.
You could, you have the time, can you repeat?
Sure. 5:00 PM, 9:15, 9:45, and 11:08. Music was shut off at 11:15 and then they went to a silent DJ, which was according to their, the schedule that they had provided.
Okay.
Well, this was a benefit, you know, it was tied into Project Wells and.
Well, it became a benefit when he ran into opposition at the, at the special events committee and it was resubmitted as a benefit. Did, forgive me, but I, I don't recall. Did, did the board, did we give him his Ferris wheel? I don't think.
No, we denied the Ferris.
Okay, so they got his marching band in the floats. Okay. And do you know or do we know whether the public was let into this concert?
I believe it was by invitation, I think is my understanding.
Okay. Well, I've gotten some calls from neighbors. I wanted to follow up on that. That's all I have. And I was prepared to talk about this, bring the CAC meeting, but since we've had a, a morning of cell towers, I think we'll wait and we're going to have a work session on it, which will be a better opportunity.
Sure. All right. So I just wanted to touch, get everybody an update on senior services. Since everybody knows it's about three weeks ago where we opened the senior center for programming. That was on Monday, July 12th. So the in East Hampton, the senior nutrition program is averaging about 40 participants, 40 plus participants a day. Montauk is seeing about 15 plus seniors come in for lunch. Wellness activities continue before and after lunch. What we've done is we've consolidated and had wellness activity go right into lunch. And then sometimes we've got activities afterwards. Attendees are wearing their masks when they're moving around the center, except when they're eating. And if folks do want to attend our center, we ask that they just call and make a reservation, which has always been a policy. Adult daycare continues to have Zoom program, the programs are being offered via Zoom. And we're hoping that we're going to be resuming in-person services in mid-September. Senior transportation's up and running. We're operating locally Monday through Friday. And we go to, you know, typically physicians in Southampton on Mondays and Wednesdays. The new residential repair maintenance mechanic has been serving clients. We've gone through the waiting list and new clients are welcome. Our in-home services are fully operational and all existing clients are being serviced. Case managers meeting with clients daily and anyone with issues that they'd like to discuss should reach out to 631-329-6939. We still are operating counseling with Jane, which is a program we do through Family Service League that's individualized counseling for those 60 plus. That's every Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00. If you call the senior center, we can arrange an appointment. And then Family Service League also offers a monthly caregiver support group. That's the second Friday of every month via Zoom at 1:00 PM. So everybody knows we went out for an RFP for the new senior center. It was, it originally supposed to be back, I guess, a little bit late July, but we've had a lot of interest in the, in the center. We've gotten a number of questions from potential architectural firms, which we've been addressing and issuing addendums. We also had a couple of firms reach out and ask if they could do a site visit. So yesterday there was a site visit. Diane Patrizio, Human Services Director, Jeannie Carosa, Purchasing, met, I believe it was 10 firms, set representatives. So the, the RFP is due back on August 12th. As David and I know, the paving on Springs Fireplace Road is, is, continues. What I have gotten.
Throughout the night.
Yeah. What I have gotten from, from folks that live, you know, just off of the, you know, the main artery there is that the road is quiet because the, the paving has like quieted that road.
It's a weird feeling, actually. There's two things.
To drive on it.
Yeah, completely. It's, first of all, it's darker because it's just, it's asphalt, it's concrete, but you, you, you drive, my own, my own story. You pull out and you, you, one of the ways you recognize a car is because you can hear them coming, thum, thum, thum. Now you have to take your time a little bit more and look for the cars. Because it's just, it's not, it's not a sense that you can use as much anymore where you're driving. But it is looking good. And they, they got my section close to my house on last night.
Yeah. And I was trying to, I had reached out to McLean because they were hired by the county to be their field inspector to see if I could get an update as to, because originally they had said it was going to be six nights, but we're past that. So I'm trying to figure out when they're going to wrap up, but I haven't gotten that information yet. The special events, I wanted to bring up two things. One is, you know, we've gotten applications for beach cleanups at Ditch Plain. And the first one was two weeks ago, CCOM did a teen event, which was very successful. And last Saturday, Surf Rider went down there and in two hours they collected 89 pounds of, of garbage. So. Where was this? At Ditch Plains at the. Eight nine pounds of garbage. Of garbage. And then I also have a resolution on for today that's going to be modifying the special event permit that we had authorized at our last work session. That was for VNA Hospitality LLC doing business as Hampton Beach Service. This was for, you know, code compliant beach fires. The special event committee recently voted to recommend modifying the special event permit to remove Indian Wells Beach and Amagansett and Beach Lane and Wayne Scott from the list of permitted locations. So this company would only have the downtown Montauk beaches. The Spring CAC met on July 27th and the proposed weight limit at Aquabonic was on the agenda and one of the CAC members had raised the concern that having a limited weight restriction on a portion of Aquabonic could push the problem elsewhere. The Spring CAC with supportive step and systematic approach to address this concern. So I just got word that they passed a unanimous resolution recommending that the truck, that the traffic consultants be retained by the town to identify the residential roads that feed into the corridor and that weight limits be defined for such residential streets. Higher weight limits would be put in effect for streets that trucks and buses need to and should use to get to the corridor. And this was approved by 19 members of the Spring CAC. So that's what I have for today. And like Jeff said, there's been a lot of reporting on the, the remainder of the Spring CAC meeting, which was probably the last hour and 45 minutes, where members of the community asked questions about the emergency communications and wireless service proposal. So now what I'd like to do is move on.
Sylvia.
Oh, sorry. The only thing I was going to, I had energy sustainability and you've heard their presentation today, so we can move on.
I just wanted to ask about Hampton Beach Services because I'm not happy with the permit. When it was presented, it was presented that they, you know, they were going to be sort of a low impact service, you know, you wouldn't even know they're there, no advertising, you know, no further involvement or service because they were putting out a fire, putting out the setup for a fire and moving it. But that's not what they've been doing. They, and in fact, it's aroused, you know, quite a bit of controversy in the community because they've set up chairs with advertising, they had a truck go on the beach and they're offering food as well. And I just wondered, you know, I see that this resolution is to limit where they can go, but you know, this is not exactly how it was presented at the special events meeting that I was at. My impression from your discussion of it was that this was like a new idea and our code wasn't really ready to handle it. And we're going to adjourn temporarily while we adjusted the code, which I understand, you know, that there's a need to do that. But the fact is, you know, this is not the first time they've exceeded their right to operate on the beach because they were out in 2017. It was reported that they were doing the same thing. They're putting out chairs and setting up areas of the beach as if they controlled them and delivering food and fires. And you know, from what I understand, the fire pickup is like $499. So I'm not enthusiastic about even having a permit for these, for this business. They, they started out violating what was represented in the, in the committee. So maybe.
So they, they, they put in two applications. One was for the code compliant fires and maximum of six fires with no more than 15 people per fire. And they put in a second application for, and that, so that's a date, a nighttime event from 6:00 PM till 12:00 midnight. The second application they put in was for tables and our lounge chairs or chairs and umbrellas during the day. And we denied that application. We never had a conversation in the special events committee. We never talked about whether their equipment that they put out was, had advertising on it or not. That never came up. But as everybody's aware, they, I guess it was two Saturdays ago, they showed up at Indian Wells Beach during the junior lifeguard tournament. And John, if I say too much, you'll need to tell me, but they showed up, they pulled on the beach, which you can drive on the beach until 10 o'clock, although there is a section of the code that says that if it's, you know, you know, if there's a safety implication, which there were a lot of families down there and kids running around, that you'd use your good judgment and you wouldn't drive down there. They showed up and they, they set up umbrellas and chairs and that there was, you know, some pushback from members of the community down there and code enforcement was, you know, K, I'm sorry, Marine Patrol came right away. They got the phone call from Johnny Ryan Jr. Marine Patrol showed up. They were cited. And as a result, we discussed what transpired at Indian Wells Beach at our enforcement meetings on Wednesday, as well as at our special event meeting last Wednesday, which unfortunately you weren't there for that discussion, but the, the committee, you know, was unanimous in revoking Indian Wells Beach and Beach Lane, but still allowing them to operate fires from 6:00 PM to 12:00 midnight in the downtown Montauk beach area. And I, and I believe on Friday, I, I think it was Friday, I sent the resolution around, I believe to everyone so that if you had questions, concerns, you would, you would bring them up, you know, and, and share that with me.
I'm just worried because they, you know, obviously they violated the rules previously. And I'm worried just the setup of the company seems to be more than just putting, putting fires down.
Well, we, their, their permit says no food and there's, they can't put up tables. It's strictly, it's for the metal container, you know, set up the fire and, and set up the chairs. They're not a caterer, right? So it's, it's, the permit says no food, no tables, you know, it's just the fire and the chairs. And for, in downtown Montauk.
Discuss.
Are they, are they charging $4.99 for the fires?
I don't, I don't look at, you know.
That's what I understand.
This actually got.
That's not $4.99.
This got discussed in the Montauk CAC last night because beach fires are always a hot topic.
It's a burning.
It can be incendiary. Boom, boom.
So the discussion initially came to some locations they were doing for chairs and such that we, I think it was on social media from two weeks ago. But overall, that the way that the town is looking about trying to regulate beach fires or having a, a, a vendor ship for is a potential way that we can try to get a control of our, our beach fires right now at downtown Montauk. So they, they were, it was, it, it was just a brief discussion on it. It's something that they're happy the town board is looking at right now because they know it gets worse and we don't have enough Marine Patrols, boots on the grounds to cover everyone. So at least what it does, it give, it gives someone that's setting up a fire, it gives them, we know whose it is. We then have legal means to remove or revoke their license. So they were, they were, the majority of the people are happy to skip it.
Okay. Is that switching out?
I think, but it's a, it's a, another, it's another discussion I think we're going to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. In the off season.
I mean, and there's honestly, there was, there was opinions that we should maybe not even have beach fires anymore, anywhere. So there's pros and cons to that.
Right.
I'd hate to see that, but.
There's, but that's, that's their opinions. There's both, both of them.
Yeah. The litter issue is, is a bad issue and we had that, I want to remember the episode where a young girl got badly burned because people don't know how to put the fires out. I just think the sand was going to put it out.
No, I, you know, when I was a kid, we were at Lido Beach and I, somebody dumped their coals and I stepped on it. So I know that they were like, it's. So ready to move into resolution?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So Resolution 2021-867 is to appoint home health aide Carly Williams to the Human Services Department at the hourly rate of $17.98 and an annual salary of $32,727.24 retroactive to August 2nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2021-868 is to amend Resolution 2021-817 payout upon retirement. This is for Jeannie Hamilton, resolved with the correct amount of Jeannie Hamilton's final payout scheduled on payroll number 15 was $150,800.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
869 is to modify special event permit for VNA Hospitality LLC doing business as Hampton Beach Service.
We'll call another.
We get second, second.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Carol, roll call please. Councilwoman Black, that's all.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby?
Aye.
Great. Resolution 2021-870 is approval of very special event permits. It turns out that the Indian Wells Junior Lifeguard Tournament, the application got stuck to another application and it didn't come, you know, wasn't on the agenda last week, so we need to approve it retroactively.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Like to offer Resolution 2021-871, appoint seasonal lifeguards for July, August 2021. Alyssa Bale, $16.50 retroactive July 22nd, 2021. And Elliot McDean, Ocean Lifeguard, $15.50 an hour retroactive to August 2nd, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 872 is to appoint seasonal recreational leader in the recreational department, Cheryl Carter, retroactive to August 1st, 2021, at an hourly rate of $26.62.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
873, point seasonal groundskeeper one in the parks department, Steve Amay and Christian Morris, retroactive to August 2nd, 2021, hourly rate of $21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
874 is to accept the resignation for seasonal recreational specialist Kevin Clancy effective July 21st, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
875, set resignation of seasonal lifeguard Eugene De Pasquale, effective July 26th, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
876 is a title change from seasonal labor to groundskeeper one for Milton Luzano, hourly rate of $21, retroactive to July 18th, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2021-877 is to appoint part-time labor in the highway department Connor Larkome at an hourly rate of $18.41 an hour to be paid by weekly, retroactive to August 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution, the number's on the other one, 878 is to accept the resignation of part-time office assistant Brittany McVitty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 879 is to promote heavy equipment operator Matthew Myers at an hourly rate of $28.16, it'd be $1,572 annually at rate 21 on step for 40 hours a week. And it's effective, retroactive to August 1st, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So executive session, I know we've got Bill here, which we need to go into executive session with our outside counsel for the airport. Can we have time set up, Don, for, for outside counsel joining us today?
Lisa.
Yeah, Lisa and Peter. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We did have Vince, a window between 1:00 and 3:00.
So you missed that.
So he's going to be, I think, joining you Thursday as well.
Okay.
He's also available at the 4:30, but I think if you have him from Thursday, it's probably fine. I don't think I have to have Nick. I can probably, but he's available anytime we can get to it. I thought maybe when Bill was here, it would be good to have Nick on the phone with us because we're going to just talk about the sound, not directly related to what you do, but the sound aircraft situation. We're kind of at a position where we, we haven't taken a position as to what's going on between the estate and the.
We're, we're.
I'm sorry.
So we haven't moved into exec, so I make the motion, we moved into exec to talk with advice of counsel on the airport issue and to discuss leases at the airport. And that's all I have on my.
Land acquisitions.
And land acquisitions. So great. And I do, we go into it right now or can we take a 15 minute? How about we say 3:30? 3:30 will be in exec session at 3:30. I had a second. So 3:30 and we're going to do it via Zoom.
Okay.
I mean, otherwise I don't know how else we get.
Yeah. We can get, we just do telephone. It's up to you. We can do either.
Whatever you want to do. Well, what do we do, can we, John, can we do Bill in here?
We can do Bill here.
And then, and then if we need to get anybody else in line.
Where are we down at town board meeting?
Yes. You know what, Mike, we're, it's a wrap.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to fade to black just.